All the meeting order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Boss?
Present.
Pipia? Graham?
Here.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Present.
Schroller?
Here.
Throm?
Here.
Barnes?
Present.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you very much. Just following up from our meeting from last time, as Presiding Officer, I am charged with preserving order under quorum at the meeting. With that being said, if you would like to address the -- if you would like to speak, please address the Chair. Wait until you are recognized before proceeding. This is just to prevent general conversation and to keep order. Sometimes we have multiple conversations going on, so please address the Chair if you would like to speak. With that being said, the first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes on May 28th. And Terry has some amendments that I handed to me, so I'll hand them this way and this way, and I'll take a minute to read them as well. Does anybody else have amendments? Darlene, did you have any?
Yes, I do.
Okay, well, let's take just a minute and read what has our -- Has everybody read those? Darlene, would you like to let us know what your amendments are?
Yes. On page 10, or it says 9 of 10.
9 of 10. Of the minutes, right? Okay.
It would be the top paragraph, and starting on the third line, CM Boss asked about including the Kester block as the concerts are held there.
Because -- oh, due to the concerts?
I did not mention anything about Gardens or Gazebo Park.
Okay. CM Boss asked about including -- okay, I got it. All right, do you have anything else?
Well, one thing I would like in the minutes, I would much prefer that we not use abbreviations. Whereas one place it says CE Officer. I mean, many places where we've seen, like RFQ, MSR, I think that if any citizens looks at our minutes, they should be able to realize what we're talking about.
Okay.
Now, there are some things that are common, like K-dot, you know, pretty much everybody would know what K-dot was. But when we're using -- how does the rest of the council feel about that?
After it's written out once, can we use the abbreviation? Once written out the first time, and henceforth, we can use an abbreviation if we put that abbreviation in brackets?
If it's in the same paragraph.
Okay.
In the same paragraph.
I'm okay with that. Are those your only comments, Darlene?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone else have amendments or comments? All right, so I would entertain a motion to approve as amended?
Move the -- approve the minutes for the May 28, 219 meeting with the approved amendments.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. The next comment is -- the next section is public comments. If you are not on the agenda, you're welcome to come to the podium, give your name, your address, and your ward, and you may share for up to five minutes.
My name's Michael Ratliff. I'm the manager of the U.S. Cellular Store here in town, 500 Block of Broadway. I'm not sure what our ward is.
Hmm, we're three.
Three.
You're three.
So, our store is going to be hosting a public event in front of our store on Friday, June 21st, from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. We're going to be providing a free barbecue for the public. We'll also have picnic tables and chairs set up for people to eat, as well as a bouncy house for kids to play on. That'll be from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. that Friday. So, we would just like to request, if possible, if we could close the part of the street in front of our store there, just for the time of that event.
So, when you say the rest of the block, so are you saying your south side of Broadway? That's what you want?
Yeah, just like right in front of our store.
Like where your angle parking is?
Yes.
Do you want the whole width of the street?
Yeah, because the bouncy house is pretty large.
So, the whole street closed?
From --
6th, about where Cromie's drive-through is?
It'd be really just like where, like, yeah, in between Cromie's and our store, probably right there in the middle of that till the end of our store.
So, you wouldn't affect?
Wouldn't affect the insurance parking.
The insurance or the laundromat. So, you're just taking the space in front of the empty -- but you want to totally close it off. You want to close off north to south, the entire block. So, people would have to go around the block. What do you guys think, council? I want to encourage development in that area, and they're there, and we don't want to run them off.
Would the city crew be putting up barricades, or what would you be using?
I was going to ask, like, if we need to provide our own barricades, or if the city would be able to provide those.
Austin?
We have barricades.
So, the city could provide them if the council approves this? It's a Friday.
Have you talked to the insurance agency or anything, or the neighbors about it? Have you -- they know about this?
We've approached Jeff Dankenbrink before about, like, other things. He doesn't really want us to use the area in between our two stores for liability purposes. But I haven't talked to them next door at the insurance place, just because we weren't going to be affecting their customer parking, because we're just going to block off right in front of our store. They would still be able to use that little, you know?
In front of their store?
Mm-hmm. And you said half of the driveway between Cromie's Market and your store, you think it would encroach out into that a little?
I don't think it would need to.
You think just really the way?
I think just the area right in front of our store should be sufficient.
So, you're not going to go in front of Cromie's?
No.
Oh, okay.
Some of our customers may park there.
Yeah, well, that makes sense.
Sure.
Public parking.
How will they turn around? If they're parked angle park, how are they going to get out?
Well, they'll have to do one of those.
Probably irk down the driveway.
J-turn?
Between Cromie's Market and their building, isn't there?
But not if it's blocked.
They're not blocking that off.
No, and I wouldn't block off the -- there's kind of a parking lot that's on the north side of Broadway. I wouldn't be blocking that off, or even wouldn't even need to block off the alleyway between our two stores if people needed to turn around.
They could go through there and go south, so.
Do -- isn't that -- do you know, Todd, is that public -- is that private property? Does Dank's?
It belongs to the --
That drive-through is Dank's, and also between Broadway and Center is Dank's?
That's also his.
Yeah, so those aren't really public access, so people would have to make U-turns. Obviously, the people going westbound would see it and would turn on 6th.
And you could discourage people through traffic by putting a barricade in the middle of the street at the 500 blocks?
True.
So, that, I mean, that kind of signals that there's something, don't just cruise down through there.
Or put a sign that says, "No Through Traffic."
Yeah.
That would probably serve the purpose.
Little signage goes a long way.
So, are you guys okay with this, with the city putting up the barricades for him?
Yeah.
Is that a matter?
Yes.
I'd like to ask, is there a reason that Dankenbrink don't want you to use that, because people could go through to the alley? What was his reason?
He's discouraged us from parking there in the past, or from having, like, any vehicles or even equipment.
Well, parking's one thing, but to be able to go through the alley?
But using this through traffic, I haven't asked him if he would be okay with that.
I think since it's personal property, I think we should just keep people on the street.
Why?
So, I would entertain a motion to approve his request with the city letting him utilize our barricades?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0. And just so you know, next time, you need to get in business and discussion items instead of public comments, because we're not supposed to vote on stuff.
I tried, I was a little late.
But you are blessed, because you're the only one here, I believe.
Thank you.
So, you got special treatment there.
I appreciate it.
Thank you for your business in Marysville.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michael.
Are we invited?
Absolutely, it's free in the public.
So, is -- are you -- what are you celebrating?
It's just a customer appreciation event. We try to hold annually. We held one last year, and when Cromie's did let us use that area. But since they're now closed, we're having to explore other options. But it'll be fun.
Good.
We'll advertise it.
Good.
Other locations, it's brought over 200.
People to town? Awesome.
Yeah.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Another tourism event.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comments? I shouldn't have taken that for granted. Okay, we'll move along to business and discussion items. Brad, I see you're in here, so you want to share, Brad, about your product a little bit? I know we have your bid sheets here, but you want to just share a little bit, so we have a little bit more than what we've read.
More than what you've read. Okay. I'm Brad Alkerberger, in case anybody doesn't know me. I have been running Rainbow International for over 30 years here in town, and we found that there was a need for mosquito and tick control. And I've been researching for years on my own little property, how I can get mosquitoes and ticks to go away and not be around. I couldn't find anything that I could use personally or through the Rainbow business with the equipment that I got. And we did some investigation, and we found that Mosquito Squad was the pioneer on the mosquito and tick barrier process. They started it back in?
95.
In 95. And, oh, by the way, this is Clayton. He's a corporate guy. He's from Richmond, Virginia, and he's here for a, kind of like a site visit, just to make sure I'm doing things properly and that we're doing it right and everything.
And for the council meeting, right?
Yeah. Called him special for the council. But, no, they pioneered the process for the barrier system, and all the other -- there's multiple mosquito barrier businesses in the country now, but they all copied and patterned themselves off the Mosquito Squad. So, we went with them, it's a franchise, and we've been treating yards for, well, since about the 6th of May. And the ones that we've done so far, everybody's come back and said, "I can't believe there's no bugs, no mosquitoes." And at my house, my dog runs the yard, and before we treated, we were pulling ticks off of him almost every day. Since we've done the barrier treatment, haven't pulled a tick off of him since. So, in my mind, now that I've seen it work and done it, it does what it says it'll do. Up until then, it was like, eh, okay, you guys say it works, I'll take your word for it, because you've been around long enough. But it's a 21-day residual on the treatment, so we come back every 21 days, and we put a barrier around the property and a barrier around the house, and that keeps everything from getting into the yard or into your house. We pay special attention to where you might spend your evenings out in the yard, on the patio, or on your deck, or things like that. We treat areas that where mosquitoes will harbor and breed, and there's -- it's a -- it's just a good system that works. I'm really impressed with it so far.
Tell me about the product you're using.
We use Bifin and Fendora, Fendona, and it's -- we use, out of a gallon of water, that we mix it in, you know, so much per gallon, 98% of the mixture is water, so it's a very low dose of the insecticide that we use. So, it's not really concentrated, but it's enough that it will get rid of the mosquitoes and ticks.
So, it's safe for children and pets?
It's not. You follow label directions and apply it properly according to the label instructions. It's non-toxic to pets and humans. It's a --
Once it's dry?
Yeah. It takes about 30 minutes after we put the application on. We usually tell the customer to stay away from it, or stay out of the yard for about 30 minutes, and then after the 30 minutes, everything is dry, then it's non-toxic.
So, for city properties, when would you spray?
That's kind of been our, like, deal, trying to figure out when. We'd probably go early in the morning, when people aren't there, and if there is somebody there playing, we'll maybe we'll visit with them and say, you know, "How long are you going to be here? You know, you're going to leave for a little bit," or what? And we would do it when nobody's around.
So, when you say early, are you saying, like, 6:00 a.m.? Or what are you saying?
It will just have to --
I just don't, 6:00 a.m. I just don't.
Yeah, between 6:00 and 7:00, somewhere around in there.
Okay.
It kind of depends on when we can get in there, when there's nobody around. And as we're -- some of the areas that we're treating, by the time we get around it and done that, the first part that we treated is going to be dry, but there will be two people doing it, and it's -- the backpack blowers are fairly noisy. I mean, it's enough that when you're doing it, people kind of look to see what the noise is. But, and hopefully, they'll, you know, we'll put the signs out and like that, so they, you know, hopefully, if somebody starts coming in, we can tell them, says, "No, you need to wait a little bit, and then, you know, 30 minutes, you can come back in."
So, I have to ask the question, if you have a barrier and a barrier, what about the insects in between? Like, they just die, or?
Mosquitoes only fly about 2 to 4 feet before they land, because they're not very good flyers. So, we -- our barrier is 30 to 35 foot wide?
Oh.
All the way around. And with us being new, we want to make sure that everybody is happy and that, you know, they get a good control. We tend to do the entire yard, whether they, you know, if there's a gap in the middle, we hit that anyway, just for --
So, it's not just a perimeter barrier, you're actually hitting most of the yard or the area?
Over, yeah, overall, we are pretty much hitting everything, but for the ticks and mosquitoes, you don't have to, but it's -- we do, just because we want to make sure that we do good coverage and that, you know, we knock down the 85 to 90% of the mosquitoes and ticks that are in the area.
Okay.
And as it goes on, the more treatments you do, you kind of figure, if you got 1,000 mosquitoes today, and we knock down 85%, and they don't reproduce from until new ones, so then we're working on a less number.
It remains 15.
So, the next one's going to be a little bit better, a little bit better, a little bit better, so it continues throughout the year, and it -- but, yeah, it's -- it does a very good job.
Did you have a question?
Yeah. What, if any, impact does it have on honeybees, butterflies, you know, maybe quote-unquote more positive?
Pollinating.
Positive pollinating insects.
Yes. We get that a lot. Normally, anything that is flowering, any flowering plants and like that, we do not treat those. We come up to the side and blow, you know, down, so that we don't hit the flowers, and it just, that way, we don't affect the honeybees. The -- other companies do quite a bit of business with beekeepers, to keep the stuff around there, and it doesn't, you know, as long as you take precaution and not?
Direct to?
Treat, you know, directly hit them, you're not going to affect those.
Darlene, did you have a question?
Yes. Say, a neighboring property has standing water, tons of mosquitoes. I just don't understand how to tell those mosquitoes to stay over on that property.
Well, that's the barrier system. So, like I said, the mosquitoes can only fly so many feet before they have to land on something, and if they fly into our barrier area, when they fly onto that and land on a leaf or a blade, you know, grass and stuff like that, that's when they touch the Fendona and Bifin, and then that kills them.
What about the bees?
Okay, mosquito is like that big, and a bee is like that big, and it's not enough to kill the bees, but it's enough to kill the mosquito because of the size. Close?
Yeah, and I'm actually a beekeeper myself. I had a franchise for five years in central Minnesota, and have been actively with Mosquito Squad now for eight years. It's a product that works fantastic. It changes your summer. And to your question, being a beekeeper, that was very concerning for me. So, part of the training process that we train all of our technicians when they come to the corporate offices, is how do we manage that? How do we manage those good pollinators? And just like Brad identified, we stay away from blooming plants, flowering plants, and that's how we mitigate that, that type of control for bees. You know, bees will travel up to 2 to 3 miles to fight their pollen source. So, it's just not only where the city park is, or where Brad is applying, it's in general, you know, it's just good awareness for the public.
Are there, you know, is it 21 days?
Yes.
Is that what you said? So, are there things that we could do as far as we shouldn't mow right away or within so long? Are there a number of mowings, or even the type of plants? Like, I mean, I know some mosquitoes live in trees, is my understanding. I mean, how does that impact it? I wondered about city parks specifically, because it's got a lot of big trees.
And that's part of our barrier treatment, is we go, we spray up into the tree?
Okay.
And it's kind of like a, kind of an L shape. It's, we spray across this way, and then we come up into the trees, because the mosquitoes like to harbor under the leaves, where it's cool and dry, or cool and moist, whatever it is, and?
Yep, they're looking for protection.
Yeah. So, when we treat an area, if it's a bush or whatever, or shrub, we'll treat it the bottom, and then we treat from different sides, so that we get under the foliage, so that that's where -- and then rain, unless it's like a 5-inch downpour, it's not going to wash the insecticide or the treatment off, because most of it is going to be on the underside, and that's where the mosquitoes go. So, it, we have to, you know, if it's raining one day, then we'll put the treatment off till the next day when it's dry, and like that, so it's, it doesn't, the rain doesn't affect it. Mowing, yeah, you're kind of, you know, you're at the mercy of, you know, if I could time it to where, where you'd say, "Okay, this is the day we're going to treat," well, then the cemetery guys, "Okay, you've got new mow on Tuesday, because we're going to treat on Wednesday."
We can do that, can't we?
That would be your best, optimal situation.
Right.
But it doesn't make that much of a difference.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we would tell our customers, I worked with the city administrator, and they said it was the best money they spent, because their customers, the public, could get out and enjoy the parks, the walkways, and it really did manage that type of mosquito and fly control as well. 14 to 21 days is what we would tell our customers. You know, mosquitoes just don't come back automatically on that 21st day. You're going to start seeing them coming in 14, depending on the weather, through a hatch cycle. But definitely is a product that works well.
So, I'd be remiss if I didn't ask, this won't have any negative impact on the squirrels in the city park?
Oh, now you're worried about the squirrels.
I'm just putting it out there. Somebody will ask, "Did you think about the squirrels?" I'm just --
No, like I said, it's non-toxic to pets and humans. If you've got a pet squirrel, which all the squirrels in Marysville are pets.
That's true.
They will be fine.
That's true.
We'll just tell them, "Stay out of the city park for 30 minutes," and then they'll be gone.
Truth, I wasn't aware.
Push them off. Bring them back.
Did I get your question answered properly?
Well, I've got another question.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't know if I cut you off or not.
Does it kill those biting gnats?
Is that the white, the white?
Those little teeny ones?
Little teeny ones that just swarm in?
Well, they're tiny.
Yeah.
Should it help, or does it not?
It does help. It's something we can't guarantee, because gnats, they kind of go on the wind. They don't fly like a mosquito.
Like a mosquito.
From top to foliage to foliage. But we can help to control them with different types of products that we do add in. One is a growth inhibitor that just keeps the gnat from developing to that next stage, just like fleas and ticks. That type of a product helps that. So, yes.
Does it?
It manages.
I'd like to ask, has it helped the chigger population?
Chiggers? Yes, it does. I got a sister-in-law that she was hesitant about doing this, and she goes, "Well, we'll get rid of chiggers," because last year, she'd step out in her backyard, and she has had chiggers all over. Well, we treated her yard a second time last week, and she finally came up to me and said, she goes, "Brad, because I think it's working, because I haven't had any chiggers. I got to sit on my back porch and didn't get..." So, yes, it will.
It's a little early yet.
And if the chiggers are really, really bad, and they, we can't get rid of them or slow them down, like on the first application, if somebody is saying they're just terrible, terrible, there is an additive that we can put in that will help knock them down even more, and that's that growth inhibitor that we can put in. But normally, it, just the barrier treatment is doing very well so far. But, yeah, it will, because that was a big, big question of mine, you can attest to. When I went to the class, every question was, "Does it get rid of chiggers? Does it get rid of chiggers?" They got tired of me asking chiggers.
That's right. You guys have any other questions about the product?
Will this do anything for the mosquitoes downtown? Somebody wanted to know if we were going to spray the streets and stuff, and I said, "Well, as far as I know, this was mostly for the parks and stuff." Will it do anything for the mosquitoes downtown?
Probably not.
Okay.
Except the Kester block.
Now, there is, talking to Clayton on the way over here, there are other processes that we could use if you wanted to do a larger volume, like the trail, if you wanted to do the trail, if you wanted to do alleys or, you know, streets like that. There's other things that I didn't, it was bigger than what I wanted to get into right away, but if it's something that's needed, we can, I can, you know, work with him, we can come up with something that would work, that we could go through and do, you know, bigger areas. It'd be less expensive doing it, but it's a, it's a direct knockdown. It doesn't have any residual, so it would be a little more, a little more often if needed, but?
We treated 43 miles of roadway every week for the city to make sure, and it was very cost-effective. We treated it in the evening, when mosquitoes aren't active, and it reduces numbers. It, what can I say? It's very manageable. Like Brad said, it's less cost, because the product is less cost. Like Brad says, it's less cost because the product is, is less cost. And you're reducing numbers, more enjoyable for the downtown folks or wherever that you are within the city.
Well, why don't we stay focused on the parks for now, see how we like it, and we can always expand it.
Like I said, it's just something on down the road that we can, we can discuss at another time, but that is a, an option that's available.
Okay. I would like, just to go over these maps real quick. I noticed the cemetery, you don't have a package, but the cemetery, it looks like we do the entire perimeter. It's on page 14. And then, when we go to the city park, we don't do the whole perimeter. And I guess I remember standing outside these tennis courts, getting eaten up, watching tennis in the fall. And I also, we didn't cover the camping area. So, is there a reason?
On the, that part there, we met with, with Austin, and this is, when we were there that day, he kind of, he said, I'm kind of worried about the, the playground and that, that sluit, or the lower part in through there. And we, along with, I don't know if it's on there, but we put in there that if you, if you did do the package deal like that, we would, the little stadium area in the middle of the park.
The bandstand.
The bandstand area, we would treat around that at no cost.
But it still wouldn't get all that.
No.
You know, I guess because of how saturated that center part's gonna be, I think mosquitoes are gonna be horrible right there, down in that practice field. And I, I know around that tennis court, they were miserable last year.
They were migrating over to the football field, a lot of it going that way, too.
So, well, we're like, we're not gonna do a barrier around, but how do you guys feel about the city park?
Well, I think the camping would be, that area would be.
Well, that's what he was saying, is to include that. I'm just, this area, if you take that camping area out, you have the whole, what is that, the north quadrant? You got, I mean.
Yeah, just, yeah, because.
You could go around the tennis courts. I don't think they're on the tennis courts, but if you did that perimeter around and get that drainage area, I think we, don't you think it's gonna be the very absolute worst in that drainage area?
I have, I feel, if we, if we're gonna sign up and do this, and you're gonna do all of those treatments, there's no coming back. Why can't we work into this and see how it's going? Instead of saying we're signing up for that many treatments, because we're gonna bunch of phone calls from people that's, ain't getting any cucumbers, and they start wanting to cry the blues about that, and that's gonna happen.
You guys don't care about those other areas at the city park?
I, I agree with you. I think that they're in that low area, the practice area, but even over there around, between the tennis courts and the highway and around, there's lots of places for water to stand.
It's horrible. There's trees, and there's trees there, and it's covered area. And I tell you, I sat there and watched a tennis match, and I couldn't even stay there five minutes because it was, they were biting me so badly.
Well, I know, last Wednesday, we were at the pool, on the north side of the pool, sitting there waiting for some parents to get there, you know, about quarter after eight. They were pretty nasty along that sidewalk there on Walnut Street.
On the north side?
On the north side where the benches are, so.
But, and the way you do it, though, you have to make a circle because barrier, you have to make a circle, right?
So, could there be like an outer circle and an inner circle on that map? I'm looking at the map you are.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, the city park's kind of, it's a, it's not a house, you know? We got a house, and we got a property.
Right.
That's easy. The city, because that's where, you know, we, we went down, we visited with Austin, and it's like, because if we did the entire park, then you're, you know, you're talking, you're talking some money. And so, we thought, well, just, just do the playground area and up to kind of, kind of the, the city pool on the, the north side of the pool, but just mainly focused in that from the, what, the outhouse, well, not the outhouse, bathrooms, and follow the path around and going down towards the city pool was, we thought was, and then Sean said, well, he goes, if we're gonna do that, he says, we need to do something around the bandstand. So, we just thought, well, we'll just throw the bandstand in, and that'll get most of the, most of the, the middle part of the, of the park, but it's not gonna do anything for where the campers.
Well, can you do, can you do like a swipe there on the north side of the pool, just like, and then come over and make another circle and exclude the, just the tennis courts, but make like a U-shaped circle?
Mm-hmm.
I just, city park.
I think you need to do the campers, too.
Well, yeah, when you say you were gonna do the bandstand area, you weren't gonna do the whole square?
No, just around, just do, walk, do around, around the bandstand, and that gets you 30 foot all the way around the bandstand of a circle around that.
And you know, when you think about it, they're gonna have that, the tailgate.
In the hole.
Yeah, and we want, we don't want mosquitoes in. I think we should do that whole area. I know, who said, who said it's a start? Who, who made that comment?
Terry.
Terry? I just know what the mosquitoes were like last year, and this year, I think it's gonna be even worse, so, what, what's your recommendation on the city park?
Could, could we, could we approve this proposal and then have him get back with us before next meeting with a price for, to do the rest of the park?
Not to put you under pressure, but Wednesday is Marysville's day to spray, the day after tomorrow. If you don't do it Wednesday, then it's three weeks from there. Not to put pressure, I mean, we could probably work something different, but we're, we're kind of like a, we're a route system. We're kind of like your trash pickup. They come on Monday, they come on Tuesday, and that's the day they come. And that's how we do ours so that we can, we can keep the, kind of keep the cost down for us instead of going here one day and here and then back, and so it's, it's all.
Do you wanna eyeball that for us, Brad, and tell us what our bid would be?
Well, I don't know if I can, if I can tell you what the bid would be, but.
So, you're wanting to go along the trail?
Ideally, I would just do the north side of the tennis courts along Walnut, and then I would make a little circle on that walking path, on the east side of the walking path, go around.
You want a barrier around the tennis courts, a barrier around the swimming pool, and a barrier around the city park.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
So, are we, are we like tripling it or doubling it? What do you think? Like the swimming pool, you don't have to do the swimming pool, maybe just, the only place people are gonna sit is on the north side.
The north side.
Yeah. So, if we can go right along Walnut and maybe come around here and go ahead and do that, and you can exclude the, you could do a little U around the tennis courts. You can exclude the tennis courts themselves.
Is there still standing water in the community gardens?
Yes.
Yes. Wet for a while. The day in there was.
There's donuts in there.
Excluding any paved areas, obviously, right? Like the pool itself and the tennis courts?
Would you get more money, more for your money if you took the cemetery out now that the ceremony's already over and industry? I mean, it would equal out in money.
I'm a little, I mean.
I mean, because we did, we wanted it before the ceremony and it just.
I kind of wondered about that, too. I'd be less concerned because I think less people will spend long periods of time there.
So, swap, swap the cemetery for the city park?
For more park. We're, we're gonna be consistently using for the next six months.
So, can we swap the cemetery for the city park?
Well, you can do anything you want to.
We're just talking, trying to figure out what the price we're gonna be. Let's look at the next picture. Obviously, Dargit's Park, they're doing the whole thing. That's no problem, right, guys?
And that one, that one would hit no cost to you if you do the others.
Okay, but we're gonna expand.
If you don't do the others, then Dargit's Park doesn't, doesn't fall into that.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll tell you what our proposal is in a minute. So, you, you can decide. So, you guys okay on the Kestner block excluding Las Cabanas?
Yes.
Yes?
Well, I would rather have Las Cabanas than that gazebo area.
We have weddings there.
I see people take pictures. I see people lunch there occasionally.
I mean, Las Cabanas could do their own because they have outdoor seating. We can treat for them if they wanna do it themselves.
I don't think they ever have outdoor seating, except for the concert. People sit on the, on the porch.
Well, that's over.
I'm sorry, that's Kestner. I'm sorry, sorry. Yeah, I don't know if anybody, of course, we are doing that new porch, they might want to, so. I, so you guys are okay with the two areas on the Kestner block? And then, Lakeview, this is just the lake area right there on page 26? Sure. So, this is, yeah, so we, so basically, this is where we're at. We say we're okay with this map.
Okay.
All right? And I think, are we okay with this Lakeview map right there by the lakeside? And then Lions Park, you did the whole perimeter. Are you guys okay with Lions Park?
Yep. That could be a fair cap. Contain everything in there because of all the trees and that, but.
Yeah. Well, that is a really nice shaded park, and people use that park. Same way with Dargit's, we have to do Dargit's Park.
I mean, if you go, I went pretty much in a straight line, but, I mean, it's gonna be wherever, you know, the trees are, the trees are gonna be included in this, but I'm just trying to get a ballpark idea of it, but, because it's the, the shrubs and the trees is what we need to, need to treat in order to knock down the mosquitoes. You can spray the grass all day long, and they're not gonna, but it's the trees and that that's gonna, and that's why the city park is the, if we, we, we should city park at. Yeah, because, I mean, yeah, you can go around, but all these trees, all the shrubs and the trees need to be treated. We need to go in interior in here to get the trees and the shrubs along here and like that. You wouldn't necessarily have to do so much along here, but just mainly the foliage here. And then, if you want the rest of this done. But this is, it's such a big area, it's, it's, it's gonna be, it might be a little difficult containing everything without doing the, the trees.
Well, if you're not gonna do the cemetery, is that about equal space or not?
Yeah, it, I can't remember how.
It doesn't say the dimensions.
It did on the, maybe, maybe it didn't. It would be, it probably would be close.
And then, the only other thing is, he didn't include Lakeview or Feld Fields. Are you guys okay with that? Did you, and you're at Lakeview Fields. Are you at, it's not an issue?
I think it's so breezy.
Oh, they're in, she's talking about the mosquito problem.
There's not that much grass or.
You don't think that's a problem? Do you agree with that?
We were, like, we were at Feld Field the other night and watched fall games, and there was, there's enough breeze up there that we really didn't find any mosquitoes.
And you feel like that's true at Lakeview as well?
I don't know.
We've had him down on the Black Diamond before, but, I mean, it is what it is. It's summer.
And Lakeview, what you can do on Lakeview is treat the bleachers.
Wait a second, you won the conversation. No, that's all right.
The, the bleachers and the concession area and around the, the three diamonds around where people sit, because the, they'll, they'll harbor under the bleachers.
The trees.
And stuff like that, so, I mean, that could be a possibility that we could do that, and that would be where you're, now, the kids out in left field, if you don't, don't treat that, then, yeah, they, they could, but at least the spectators would be.
Who aren't moving.
Free.
Okay.
But that's, that's an option, too.
Okay. So, I think what, where we're at now is, we're gonna pass on the cemetery as a consensus of council, but we are gonna do the majority of the city park, as we discussed with you, excluding the paved, the paved areas like the swimming pool and the tennis courts, but including the other areas. And then, we're okay with Dargit's, and we're okay with Kestner Block, and we're all okay with Lakeview, we're okay with Lions Park, and you're gonna add a little bit around Lakeview seating, right?
I can.
Okay, so what's the number?
The, was it the, the Country Club Lake area? That was a half acre.
The Country Club Lake.
Okay, that's that little, that little.
The little.
Yeah, little strip. So, whatever the price is on that.
It's $4.90.
Okay, that's $4.90 for each half acre.
Okay, so, so to do the seating area in Lakeview is probably another $4.90?
I would say probably a half acre. I mean, it's, it's up to a half acre, so, anything over a half acre is a little bit more. It's, it's cheaper, it's not as expensive if you go from like a half acre to an acre. Just not double the price.
Okay.
But I can't, right off the top of my head, I can't remember what.
So, you said that was an acre or half acre?
I think that's, I think that was $4.90, that was a half acre, yes.
It says quantity half.
Okay, and so.
It says one, it says a half?
It says quantity.
Does it say the quantity on the cemetery?
And Mayor?
Quantity is two.
Mayor, he's got to keep in mind he's getting a, a lot of free advertising.
I'm, I'm giving you Dargit's Park for free.
That's the three acres?
It says free.
Three acres for the city? Yeah, that sounds not right.
Cemetery?
For the cemetery, yeah.
So, city park, you have two, and so, two, you're gonna add at least another one to probably three. So, we, maybe we're swapping cemetery for full city park?
Could do that.
And then add $4.90 for?
A half acre.
A half acre for Lakeview seating, and otherwise, we were okay with everything. So, the, the, the $34.79 was not the sum of all of them, was it discounted?
Yeah, because you look down here.
Plus another $4.90.
Oh, because if you pay in full.
Except, yeah, that.
You get a 15% discount?
On everything but the $4.91. That included the last two that I did for you? Yeah, that, yeah, that included that. So, you have 400.
So, that's right under $4,000.
Right at $4,000.
Assuming the swap for the cemetery of three acres covers the city park for three acres.
I really don't think we need to do Lakeview. I mean, I understand the logic behind it, but that's.
The seating area?
Yeah, I'm kind of like, that's the corner to cut, I think. I mean, I've spent a lot of time there, and I really don't see that as being.
But you think the lake area, lake areas.
The lake area, I could definitely see, but up around the seating area, I just, I'm kind of a, let's see how all this goes, and then if it's a great program, you know, and we do have problems, then we can expand next year whenever.
So, if it's a swap for the cemetery for the entire city park, taking away the paved areas, then we're back to the $34.79.
Okay, so, you're doing all the city.
All the city park that's unpaved or whatever, however you want to say.
Dargit's.
Dargit's has proposed.
Lions.
Lions has proposed.
Kestner Block.
Kestner Block has proposed.
Lakeview.
Lakeview, or the.
Lake.
I'll call it Country Club Lake because that's closer to the lake than it is to Lakeview that way.
Okay.
Country Club.
So, if you go and do it, and you figure out that city park is greater than the cemetery, you can come back to us.
Okay.
How about that? Is that fair enough?
That'll work.
I would like to ask, how's the chance? We got that set up with how many times you're gonna do it? Why can't we figure, do it all? But on July 24th, we decide whether we want to continue or not. All of a sudden, what if we decide there's too many compliances? There's, there's, a ton of things could happen.
Well, I'm thinking we should, I guess you, I feel like you have to kind of go through the whole cycle.
To know whether it was effective.
Yeah, if you just do one spray, it might not be enough. Like you said, your sister-in-law, after the second or third spray, she said it worked.
I don't think she really wanted to admit that it was gonna work in the very beginning, and, but, yeah, some of the, some of our customers have said that it's like, well, before I say anything, you know, she, they wanted to make sure that it was, it was going to work, and, and then after, after the second one relating to the first one, it's like they, most of, almost all of them have come back and said, well, yeah, it's, it's working good so far. And it, like I said, it's, it's a, there's gonna be fluctuations in it. there's gonna be fluctuations in it, there may be at the, at the end of the 19th day, you may start getting more mosquitoes popping up someplace. Well, we're gonna be back in two days to treat it again, so if it's not just ungodly bearable that you can't sit, do anything, we will come out and we will retreat. When you, if you say that you're having an influx, and it's just unbearable, we'll come out and re-treat that at our cost. So it's not a, it's not a deal where you're, you're stuck in anything. If you, if you just absolutely just hate it and don't want to do it, call me up and say we want to quit, and that'll be it.
Clayton, have you had complaints after the first treatment from customers that they wanted to discontinue the service?
There are some areas that, I had customers that were literally surrounded by swamps. They could not enjoy their property. After we were there, I had one family who said, Buzz, we haven't been on, that's my nickname, was. We haven't been able to sit on our deck and have a barbecue for five years. Last night, after you came, we couldn't do that. There's areas that are better controlled, the more foliage you have, the better is, easier is to control.
Really?
So we look for those areas that we feel the mosquitoes are gonna harbor. Did I have customers that, that said, you know what, you need to come back? I did, but we came back, and I think I probably brought on more customers because I gave them the customer service, and I did come back, treat their property, eradicated the activity that was there, and they were able to enjoy their property.
Well, I remember last year, you guys remember last year, we started talking about mosquitoes at the end of the season, and we said it's too late, and I think it's good for us to get on the front end of this. And I think we should try for the year, for $3,500 for people to use our parks per year is not a big cost overall for the amount of people using our parks, so.
Well, Mayor, I think we should decide tonight, so you could start Wednesday, if we decide tonight.
So are you making a motion, darling?
I, I move to proceed with the project.
As adjusted, or as Brad knows, we've outlined it.
Can I go over this one more time, just so I have it right?
Yes.
You're gonna trade the cemetery for the entire City Park?
Yes.
Barring, and then once I do up the measurements or whatever, if there's a fluctuation, I'll let you know one way or the other, less or more. We're gonna do Dargatz, Lions, Kestrel?
As outlined.
And the Country Club.
Yes.
Is that it?
That's it.
Five, five places, we had six, we took one off, made one bigger. Okay, so I, so I know what, what you guys are expecting and what I need to do, so that's, that's, I can make that happen.
So we'll go ahead and do it at the $34.79, and then if it doesn't come out, and you'll come back to us and say, hey, we, I actually, you owe me for another acre or whatever?
Right, yeah, no problem.
So Darlene made that motion, is there a second? Okay, we've had a lot of discussion. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, all right, Brad.
All right.
We're expecting great things.
Manage expectations, is what I've been told. 85 to 90% reduction.
Yes, yes.
You know, like that, but if, I think everybody knows where I live, where I reside at, so if anybody has any questions or concerns, give me a call.
I'm really glad you started this business, and I've noticed some of your signs in my neighborhood, so I'm feeling like, oh, I better get on board. They're all gonna go to my house.
It's taken a while, I mean, but I really haven't, we haven't done a lot of advertising. I mean, we've done a little bit, but, I mean, it's from, just from what I've gotten back in, from, from the customers, it's, yeah, it's been, it's been a very good, very good decision, I think, to start this, because I don't know of anybody else that would just start up a business like this around this area, because there's a lot of the companies, they wouldn't, they just know you're too rural, there's not enough, not enough money in it for us to have you as a franchise.
Yeah.
And it's like, I'm paying you, what, you're getting your money, what do you care? But they just said, no, it's just, it's too, so it's, I'm, I'm glad I was, I'm glad I'm able to at least offer this, and hopefully, hopefully it'll catch on, and I think as more people talk.
We'll have little signs all over town.
Yeah.
Are you, I guess, are you gonna put a sign on, on each of the parks?
Is that okay? Can I put a sign on each property?
And I think you should say that it was sprayed that day, in case anybody gets weird, wants to have, has any concerns at all, just to put a sign.
Also, on our work orders, when we do spray, we put down a bunch of information, and I will email that to probably Austin.
Okay.
And that way, you have record of when we were there, what we used, how much, and stuff like that, so.
Okay.
But, yeah, we'll, we'll get it on, get on it Wednesday morning, or, and get things, so hopefully, hopefully it has some good comments.
Perfect.
Hey, mosquitoes are gone, yay!
Okay, well, thanks, Brad.
All right.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Clayton, for coming.
Thank you for all allowing me to be here.
Yeah.
Have a great summer.
You, too. Mosquito-free, at least on our parks. Okay, the next one is the ordinance on page 30. And we did have the committee, and who's gonna report on the committee?
I guess I can do that. The committee discussed the bounds of the project for the water connection fees. We decided to take a look after last meeting, because we weren't sure about the boundaries that were previously recommended. We had a pretty lively discussion over what constitutes downtown. Turns out, that's not an easy definition for everyone, because we all have different ways of looking at it. The majority of, the majority of the committee was of the opinion that we ought to be a little bit more broad when in doubt. Reaching Fourth Street to what would be 16th Street, there isn't a 16th Street at Broadway and Center, it's basically where the Mixer's driveway is, or where the Mixer formerly was. And also from Carolina to Elm Street, which is a full block south of Broadway, and it's a full block north of Center Street. We thought this would encompass pretty much anywhere that could conceivably considered a downtown business, including chromie lumber, Schroller, Autobody, the Mixer, you know, et cetera. Also, the businesses that are on the south side of the 100 or 200 block of the south numbered streets. So in other words, where Jill Gray's dentist office currently is, et cetera. There would still be some places that would be outside the bounds of this, including where Jill Gray's office is going to be, but we thought this was kind of a compromise. Now, it wasn't, we didn't all agree on that, that was a couple members of the committee's opinion.
Sure.
So our, I'd say our committee's opinion, though not consensus, would be to make those the boundaries. 16th Street to Fourth Street, Carolina to Elm, of the ordinance.
On number four?
Yeah.
Kevin, would you like to share anything?
I just thought their boundary was too big when they set it up, and the boundary that was in the package was the one I proposed, so. I think we just made the downtown area way bigger than what it really was. Because we talked about the downtown area, to me, Broadway's downtown Marysville, and to me, the Mixer and all that up there is not considered downtown Marysville.
And Todd and I felt that the brick streets, Broadway brick streets constitutes downtown, and wanted to include the, the businesses on going from Elm to Carolina.
And all the way up to 16th.
Right, and since Broadway dead ends at 16th, we thought that was kind of a natural way to box off the eastern end of the district. And the speed limit was also 20 miles per hour throughout Broadway in that zone, which, so we thought that also was an indicator of it being downtown.
So that's their recommendation. How does the rest of the council feel? And if you're okay with that, we can change those parameters to number A, number four on this ordinance. And then we just have to update a couple dates. On number three, it would go from May 30th, A3, change May 30th to June 20th. On section three, we would just have to put that June 20th, and then obviously, the date today, June 10th at the end, where it's passed. So those would be the four changes to this ordinance, but I think we can go ahead and change them, I mean, approve the ordinance with those changes.
Well, where does Main Street, Marysville Main Street, where, where is their east boundary?
They're right across from the circle, oh.
Where, they, they kind of, we started with theirs last time.
They're, they're kind of end at, they like...
No, but I mean, the east, the east boundary.
I don't know where it ended.
Do they stop at?
I can go with the back of there.
I don't know if they stop at 15th, or whether they continue that with a block. I was thinking it was one or the other, but I know they've got...
At one time it was, and I didn't know if they ever changed there or not.
Well, they expanded.
They, they expanded when they were no longer the state main street, I don't think.
Because I know it included north to the depot and some other places that were kind of arms off of the original.
The things that were noted were, Buy Me Barbecue Now is beyond that, Frank's Chiropractic, Buyers, and the Mixer are all...
And Linda's Insurance.
And Linda's Insurance, yeah.
Well.
So if you guys are okay with that, we, you can make a motion to approve as amended.
Move to approve ordinance number 1874 as amended.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor, now, is that just gonna be, just like the place that got mowed with the grass footers work? That's a residence. Are they gonna be entitled to a two in this?
No, because the way the ordinance reads, it says a, a commercial business between that district.
All right, I just want, I just want to make sure that was clear.
Yeah, it's only commercial businesses. Good question. Anything else? Roll call, please. Boss?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Fromm?
Nope.
And Barton?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Sticking to it.
Stand with it.
We'll stay with it.
At least we know why, we know why. Okay, notices and hearings, I think Darlene wanted to communicate a couple things.
Yes, this coming Thursday at 6 o'clock will be the meeting with the residents on 11th and 12th Road, Keystone Road, and then also the Keystone Edition. We're sent letters, so that's, that's at 6:00 PM for the council. And normally...
Is it 6:00 PM?
And normally, the planning zoning meeting is at night, but it has been moved to the following week, June 20th, at 7 o'clock.
I thought we were aiming for an earlier time at one time. I thought you wanted to make it earlier, so it was right after work.
This, this was, it gave enough time for, to get home from work and do whatever they needed to do and come back in.
I thought we initially talked about five, not that it's a big deal, but, okay, so, and it would probably be beneficial, especially for you people that represent Ward Four, to be there and hear what they have to say. Everybody's welcome, though, I should say. All right, we'll move along to the consent agenda.
Move to approve consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do you guys have any questions? I have a couple of quick questions for you, Cindy. So on page 32, you don't have the Muni Court information yet. Are you guys still working on it, trying to get it straightened out?
Yes.
So you are making some headway?
Yes.
Okay, and then I noticed that our outstanding on water and sewer went up $2,000 from la, I'm sorry, $5,000 from last year to this month, last month to this month. Do you know why?
Last year from, say that again, tell me.
No, just from last month, the outstanding?
Because I think the sprinklers all came on, and so that include, that ups the, they'll get paid off, it's not really a...
It's not really a outstanding aged receipt?
Right, it's not aged, correct.
Okay, and the last thing is the Kestrel Block rent that not paid April and May, do you want to explain that situation to everyone?
Well, our renter left and didn't pay the rent. I mean, we sent a letter asking him, because he didn't pay the rent, to leave.
Did we send a deposit? Do we have a?
We have a deposit.
Just one month deposit?
And we did not get the entire thing, so it won't cover the entire bill.
Okay, and so are we, do we have somebody renting that now?
No, we are, we have someone coming in to finish cleaning, and we had to haul some trash away and stuff, which, so, yeah.
Okay, and then Cindy, I noticed on the cash receipts from the, we filed that EMC report on the pool heater after all?
Yeah.
And did that cover most of the cost?
Yes, it did, it did, quite a bit of it. Not the labor, but the pri, the...
Equipment?
No, it covered, it covered... But he had to come back, right?
There was a, but that was, that was for something else.
Right.
Yeah, but it, it covered everything but $5,000, which was our deductible.
Right.
Okay.
Not bad.
That's better than $20,000.
Yeah, it is.
And then Cindy, how come I don't see the EMC dividend on here? The EMC, they gave us a dividend, didn't we get that in May?
Right, but it, it goes on a separate deposit slip, and it's within, it, it, this is the stuff that goes just in that receipt book, and none of those others ever go through.
I thought EMC we usually saw on this cash receipts, no? Okay, that kind of is confusing to me.
I know, I don't, well, that's the way.
Just for the record, that's kind of confusing.
I agree.
And the only last question I have, I noticed that the, and, you know, this is, might be in your bailiwick, but I noticed that the, the city Muni Courts were low. Did they have court?
They did have, but it was way low this time. They're gonna have two in June or July. They're gonna have, they must have a whole bunch piled up.
Okay, because I did, the receivables were just low.
Right, and she said that, she said that when she brought them, she said they'd be low, but I think you're having two dates, which is unusual.
In June?
Either in June or July.
Does it kind of backline? Okay. Those are my questions on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I do have a question on 38.
Okay.
Under the, the budget appropriations, a miscellaneous tennis is received a date $107,423.
Where are we at?
There's two thou, there's two things in there, the land sale, sale for $50,000, and then the library reimbursements in there for $38,000.
Okay.
So those, that's $88,000 of it?
Is there some way we could, for the end of the year, have an asterisk someplace where we note that $50,000?
She could probably abbreviate M I S C, and then put slash land slash, couldn't she?
Try.
Put slash land and, and library, lib, just so you know what it is?
I don't know, the audit may, actually, they, this is a line item that we have here in the audit. He breaks apart the miscellaneous. It won't, it won't be in a line like this. It will be, I mean, he takes out a lot of things and moves them. We put it here because he wants to see them, but he will move them around, so I would assume that it will have a line of its own, but I'll...
You can probably change that header.
I can do it for here, I can change this header for, for us.
Yes, so we know.
But what will happen in the audit, I would say he's going to actually move that to a specific line. So it's identifiable, because it's a one-time.
Yeah. Thank you for having all the answers. Anybody else have questions on the consent agenda? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Against? Seven oh, all right, appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriations ordinance number 3700.
Second.
All right. Anybody have any comments?
Well, I do, Mayor. It was only for $147,766, and our largest item was employee payroll for $51,200.
And we purchased a truck.
Yes, that was a B, our second.
Yeah. I, I noticed we paid for the vacuum, the vacuum's working now, Austin?
Yeah.
Swimming pool vac, because at the beginning, when the pool opened, the vacuum wasn't working, and she was doing those hand, she was cleaning the leaves out by hand, but it's working now?
Yeah.
Okay, and the only other question I had for you is, I see that Austin Watts did his training, so is he full-time or part-time? What is he?
Part-time.
Part-time? But he's active now?
Yeah.
So he passed, does he have to do that whole eight months for part-time? He does two weeks? Two weeks for part-time?
Yeah.
Okay. Those are my questions. Anybody else have anything else? All right, roll call, please. Boss?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Schroller?
Yes.
Fromm?
Yes.
Horn?
Yes.
Seven. All right, Austin, you're up.
All right, first thing on the list is the tennis courts. I had him submit a new bid for just the north three courts, to color coat the three courts, and he added it, he put in there just in case the option of, if there's a crack in there that needs to be armor coated, it's 17 per linear foot. And then also the three sets of pickable... And then also the three sets of pickleball lines. The color coding cost $20,753, and the pickleball lines added $1,000, $1,050.
Will the pickleball lines be a different color?
Yes, they'll be able to tell what they are.
And I, I talked to the high school tennis coach, and she was very much in favor of those pickleball lines, because they play on other courts that have those. And she said as long as they're a different color, they don't cause any issues at all.
So you just don't know what color they are, but you'll know?
No, they, they should be different colors, yes. Or, you should be able to tell what they are.
And did he say how many that armor crack repair he might need, or?
No, he didn't think-
Very much, did he?
He didn't think very much, no.
We walked with him.
Yeah, he said it was a fairly decent court, and that little to no, maybe a foot, I mean, maybe a foot in there that might need some touch-up, not touch-up technically, but a little crack in there, repair.
So I think we should do it.
I, I, the coach, I talked to the high school tennis coach, she called me. I didn't call her, for the record, just, so that's clear. And she did say that she would like, before we move on this, to talk to us. That's not saying we have to wait, of course, but she would like to be here in two weeks. She couldn't, she had an out-of-town commitment, be here tonight, because I said, well, you should come and talk to us, but she was unable. So she had asked if we would consider it, she would like to wait two weeks to be here to address us before we do this. That's, like I said, that's just her request, that doesn't mean we have to do that.
Did she say what, she was, was she going to bring money for this?
We talked about that, yeah. I, I think she's also talked, probably talking to the school board members, and trying to develop something that would, I mean, she's interested in the program, she's been the coach for a long time.
I know, the thing is that they, when Bill Mullen said they might do it if it was at a different location, you know, there's two big question marks. One is a might, and the other is in the second location.
And just from talking to some school board members myself, I think there's obviously a diverse group of opinions there, just like there is here with that, but I also think that there's some consensus that there's going to be a new administration in a month. So I don't know what that'll mean for cooperation.
Well, I guess-
Hope springs eternal.
I guess the proposal is valid for 60 days.
I see, yeah.
At the very top of page 13. Are you guys okay for waiting and see what she has to say?
It mattered to me, but still under the option, though, for what it costs to fix the south courts, we're not doing it alone by the city, regardless what she talks brings to us.
Well, and I, I said that as well. I'm of that same opinion, I don't think this, since it's predominantly used for district purposes, that we should foot the bill, but-
You know, and her tennis camps went on, don't get me wrong, she's got a ton of kids down there every morning, and I'm glad to see they're using it. But after her tennis camp is done, those courts are going to die for the summer.
Yeah, well, we, you know, it's not like we're going to tear them up.
No.
But we're just not going to improve them.
Yeah.
So they're going to continue to get worse, but at least we'll have three good courts. I mean, you look at the positive side, we're willing to invest in three good courts. So are you, is it consensative council to wait and vote on this next week, next meeting?
I can move to table it if you'd like, or we can just-
Okay, you can move to table.
I move to table discussion of proceeding with the tennis court resurfacing till the second meeting of the month.
June 24th?
June 24th.
Second.
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we will table that, and again, we'll bring it back up next time. But at least we have a proposal. We can vote on it next time. All right. Before you discuss the next one, which is about the stormwater, and we're hoping to have it qualify for the CDBG. So I saw an email from Emily with North Regional Planning Commission. She said we're at 56%, which is great, and it's all 504 in, but I need to know, she, so she said we qualify. Who has to agree that we qualify?
Department of Commerce.
So when will we get that?
I, I don't know if they're going to send a notification that we qualify.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and, and do these two things, but there is another level that has to say we quali- that we qualify for it.
Well, of course, when we go to apply for the grant, they make, I would assume they make sure we qualify.
Yeah, well, we want to know, you know, before we go to all that trouble, right? But you don't know the timing of that.
No, I just know we, according to Emily, we qualify. We start getting the application ready and get it done by November 1st.
Okay, well, we'll just go on assuming we qualify, which is great news. Okay. Go ahead, then.
All right, the first one is a RFQ, request for qualification for stormwater engineering services, to evaluate or come up with solutions to drainage issues of stormwater at the Lakeview Ball Complex and surrounding area. As requested, I included up to 100-year storm, the boundaries of Laramie Street, Carolina Street, 18th Street, and Country Cove Lake. And then described the problem where we have issues where stormwater is going, and in addition to the stormwater that comes off the ballpark, the stormwater comes from the highway as well, filling up the tubes that serves that whole area, which we feel is an issue. I included a map of the, of the bear, of the study area, including some possible location for a tennis court and the future location for the fire station. I also talked about another map that was done by CES, and I couldn't fit it into the packet, but it's, it's this one right here, where they did do some elevations and some evaluation on drainage issues that we've had. And this is done back in 2007, and we're having CES update this information, because we have done some changes to the park. So this is to give a primer inside this packet for the engineers that want to bid on this, and they will also get the information that CES puts together. So, and this bid, or request for qualifications is, is due July 3rd.
Do you guys have questions about this? So I read this as, the council will make a decision within a week, so that would be at the seven, eight meeting, July 8th meeting?
Right.
And then I guess I didn't understand that the stormwater was coming off Highway 36. And if that's true, shouldn't we include the south of Highway 36?
I don't know if it's truly coming off of 36, so.
But he said it is.
The storm drain comes from 36. That's where it connects, it connects-
I don't think it did, I thought it went down the highway.
See, there is a storm drain, water runoff at 20th Street, okay. But the, all those, just the storm drains by Casey's, they go that way. Where they go-
Where do they open?
They go east down the highway.
Where do they daylight at?
East.
Like east, it all goes underground there and comes out at the-
Oh, connects to-
It goes down, going down the hill, east of Hardee's.
Yeah.
See, highway would be over here.
Because they daylight south of it.
For some reason, I, I understood it as it go, it feeds all into one system.
It all goes that way on the highway.
Okay, well, at least that, it does show that it does come off of 20th Street.
Everything goes, goes straight east.
Okay, I can-
So I think that the storm drains that comes off, maybe instead of Highway 36, that should say 20th Street?
20th Street, yes.
Okay, that I could understand.
That, that, I'm sorry, I don't know where I got that understanding, yeah.
And?
There's ones on 20th Street, I know are in the middle of the block that catches that, takes it under.
So do we need to say that the stormwater drains off 15th, 18th Street as well as 20th Street? Because you said 18th feeds into 20th, that feeds out of Baltimore. So do we want to say drains off 18th and, and 20th Street there?
Yeah.
Okay, and, and on this map, this, this box, is that three courts? Is that enough space for three courts?
That was me putting a, a section down. I didn't measure that specifically.
It looks kind of small, actually.
Yeah.
What really looks small to me is the fire station.
It's not, it's not exact-
Not drawn to scale?
It's not drawn to scale. This is a location where-
But you will give them the stuff for scale, so they can-
Well, it makes it look less big if you look at, kind of relative to the Legion. It's almost as big as the Legion, that'd be a pretty good sized building.
Yeah.
The fire station? That doesn't look very big.
You can picture the Legion with garage doors on it.
Okay, but we're, we're putting an eight-bay fire station in, right? Eight bays?
Right.
Anyway.
Vaguely.
Maybe just put NTS on there, not to scale.
Not to scale.
Not to scale? Off of your boxes? And then you didn't put the sidewalk down there, but, you know, we talked about putting a concrete sidewalk. Did, is this additional concrete here? Is that what you added there?
I did, I didn't, I just added the structures.
So on here, isn't this more concrete than we have, or?
No, it's just that white rock, it looks like concrete on, on that.
I didn't add anything to that. I, I just remembered to put the structures on there.
So do you guys think we need to put that sidewalk from 20th down and the new concrete around the building that we know we need?
I definitely think sidewalk, but around the building wouldn't be a bad thing.
So you want to-
Are they going to come and meet, and, or is it, this is, we're sending it off and they're preparing and sending back?
They will, for qualifications, they probably, my experience, they at least call up and ask questions. If they're close enough, they would come in and look at the area, but-
If, like, one company called and asked questions, would you send out the information to the other?
If there was, if they, if there was a change, or if they had trouble understanding, yes, I would send that out, yes.
Okay, just one more.
I don't know if you can draw a proposed sidewalk and propose concrete, new concrete, and make it a different color, I don't know. And then my only other question is, when you say they're going to update this, when did we vote on that? Because it seems like they'd want to do their own surveying.
No, um, well, because CES has all their information. All they have to go in and do is update the elevations. That's what, that's the information I'm getting from CES.
But wouldn't the, but we haven't approved that yet.
It was under my spending limit, and we wanted to get this moving right away. And the more information they have, the faster it goes.
Well, I was looking at this book, Municipal Products and Services Guide, and there's, like, who are you going to send it to?
The-
The request for qualifications.
BG, Schwab Eaton, Olson, and anybody large enough, well, anybody within so far.
Well, this Burns and McDonald's, so they do stormwater management, and they're out of Wichita, and this Earl's Engineering out of Salina does drainage systems.
They, they all, all the larger ones have some sort of stormwater.
Maybe we should exclude them. You guys okay with that? Ones in Salina, ones in Wichita, but they both say stormwater management. And I, I guess you guys feel like we should have CES do it rather than, because they say, on, when you look at this, they say surveys, topical surveys, but-
Sorry, don't mean to interrupt, but what they're probably going to more than likely do is take whatever CES provides them, and they're going to come up and verify it for their own liability.
Yeah.
But they'll take whatever CES has, and they will put it into their own system, and they will verify it themselves. So it'll take less time on their end-
Okay.
-if they have whatever CES provides them.
So how much is this costing us to do that?
Like, 14, or I think it was $1,700.
Did you tell us that anywhere?
Yes.
Where, in the highlights?
Highlights.
That it was set?
Multiple, I think I've talked about it a couple of different times, yes.
But did you sign a contract?
Yeah.
Well, you should have brought the contract out. I know it's under your spending limit, but if you're going to do engineering-
The, the idea behind it was they already had most of the information, and to have somebody else come in and do a fresh new would have cost us more money. And all they're doing is gathering the levels in addition to what they already have, and basically going over the changes, like the drainage area that we, or the ditch we put in the middle of the parking lot, and the new concrete we put in. So they were just, they're updating this map right here, because they have all the elevations right here, and providing that to us, so we can submit it to whichever engineering company we go with.
And then are you going to submit that with this, or after you choose the company then, Cindy?
Whenever it gets done, because it was not, it was not a right-of-way thing to get them to do it. So they put us on the schedule. I will give them this map, like I said.
The one that we currently have, but there's a few changes.
Yes, yeah, so they can have that idea. And that was one of their requests put together by one of the engineers, saying, hey, even though it's not complete, we'd love to see that.
Okay, so you got, so the request for qualifications, just put those changes for 18th and 20th, and then also to put, not to scale, and maybe add the sidewalk and the proposed concrete. So I would entertain a motion to approve that, those changes?
Move the RFQ stormwater engineering for Lakeview.
With the changes?
With the changes.
Is there a second?
Seconded it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, okay.
All right, also included is RFQ for the fire station architect. This was a, sort of, this was put together a lot by North Central Regional Planning. I put our information in there, our dates, our, the things we were looking for, and got it ready to go, and all the things that we're looking to have the architect to do. And then that last page is actually the scoring sheet we would use to judge the, the consultants with.
You guys have any questions?
Madam Mayor, three times in the last two weeks, I've had somebody ask me, had anybody really studied what it was like when we're going to put the firehouse when man is off work? When they get out of work and there's a fire deal, it's going to be one of the biggest traffic problems that we've ever known. And I have three different people say that to me in the last, well, one was about a week and a half ago, and then two more this morning at this breakfast I was at.
Guys, that's a good point.
And it's, it's kind of scary if we get an architect to do the work there and everything, and then we create a firehouse where everybody gets off work and rumbles, is sent away, and we can't save some people's lives.
Well, I guess we'll have to try to create some kind of red light system there to stop the flow. I mean, we just have to put it on the north end.
Yeah, that's not uncommon, is to have a-
Fire station signal?
The fire station signal, yeah.
What's that look like?
It's like a emergency activates, and there's one on points, and-
Yeah, right.
The light gets tripped when the doors open, or the sirens are going off.
And so is it a touchable thing?
No, it's not. It's almost-
It's just like a regular signal, but it's just a red light.
Is it overhead?
Yes.
So we'd put an overhead light there?
That would be an option, I mean, yeah.
And I think it's yellow, isn't it, caution?
I'm not sure. And there's one there.
There's a, there's a standard for it, yeah.
Well, that's a good point. I never thought about that, but you're right. 3:00 is horrible on 20th Street, isn't it? 3:30? 3:30? You know what time it is.
3:30.
Okay, is there anything else? Is there anything else?
Between three thirty and four.
Right at three thirty.
You don't want to be out there.
So I thought this was a little tight on June twentieth. You're giving them ten days from today.
This is what Doug at North Central Regional Planning said, is they already have the qualifications in a book ready to go. They would just create a letter specifically for this. And that's why we asked for email, so they're not mailing it overnight or anything like that. They're just going to send it to me and Emily. And because we need something like somewhat immediately, this was their, how they had the letter set up.
I would just, if we take it to July third, because we have a meeting on the eighth, it seems like the twentieth, ten days, we're going to mail it out tomorrow.
It seems like a fairly tight timeline.
I'm emailing it to them.
I know, but I would rather have more people participate than nobody, some people, because it's too tight a turnaround.
Is there a downside to pushing that date out a week or two weeks?
To June third?
They lose work time.
As far as the season?
Not, it's not the season. It's, we have the timeline of getting them, getting the preliminary done by September first. So you move it out, it reduces their work time by two weeks.
So they have July and August to do the preliminary phase?
And this is probably something they already have in place.
For firehouses?
These companies.
That's true. They've probably done a hundred firehouses. Every town's got a new one, so.
Except us. So now we have, now we qualify, so now we do.
Yeah, but a lot of houses, a lot of towns have built their own firehouses.
Well, with CBG funds, though.
Well, no, but, I mean, a lot of, build their own with volunteer work and volunteer labor and stuff.
So you guys, do you...
It's been doing burns, taken about eighteen months.
Do you feel like that's a hindrance, or you want to leave that twentieth in there?
I'd say leave it.
Okay, I hate to think that we don't have it. Okay, and then on, so the council will decide on six twenty-four on that? And I guess you changed the wording here. It said after conducting a review and possible telephone interviews. You changed the wording there? Why?
Just so we can run it however you want to.
Okay, well, I think it should say the same. After conducting a review and possible telephone interviews.
What's the, what was it?
That's exactly what the other one says.
Okay, so what do you want me to have there?
After conducting a review and possible telephone interviews.
It says that right there, or?
It says that on the first one.
But you want that on the second one?
Yeah, okay. And then on the next page, tell me why we have number four there on preliminary phase. It says a general review of the city's existing system to offer options alternative to address current issues of long-term sustainable function.
That's what, that was in there. This was their form. So if there's a better option, I think that's something CBG may want, rather than, hey, yeah, we want a, we want a fire station here. Well, did you look at anywhere else? Because they, they want to know that they're investing in a long-term option.
They, when it says review of the city's existing system?
Right.
Do you mean properties?
Right. Well, I mean, our existing fire stations. If, if we're just building a fire station, to build a fire station, I think that's, that's pretty much what that is saying. We may have a really nice fire station over here, oh, we want another one. And that's just, I think that's probably eliminating this, or showing that we need it.
That didn't make any sense to me, but, and then on number five, it says securing the owners, that should be city? Securing the city's approval of the, cities, right? Not owners. City?
Is it the same?
Well, we're talking about the city, not an owner, the city. Same way here on number five, should be the city. And then on number three, it says coordinated Kansas Rural Water Association. What will they do on the construction phase?
Oh, I missed that.
Do you know what that means? It doesn't mean anything to us?
Granted use for primary construction inspection. No, it doesn't mean anything to us.
So we pulled a second sentence on number three? Inspecting, working periodically and providing appropriate reports to the city. So that works, right? So pull that sentence. And then on this, on this addendum two, so you just, the criteria is T E R I A.
Okay.
So when you, you pulled seven and eight, do you know why?
I didn't pull seven and eight.
Well, it went from six to nine to ten.
So, I'll have to ask Emily on that. Maybe the numbers didn't get...
So we rate their references?
Yeah.
You rate their, and will they interview, I mean, will the Police and Fire Committee do all the interviewing?
That's, that would be the idea, yeah. Well, I mean, it, you just put possible telephone interviews.
Right.
So if we need, if we have the...
If you have an interview, everybody will be on a speakerphone to hear it?
Right, yes.
Okay, so this is the committee, okay.
Yeah, I will, I'll fix this addendum number two.
Okay. Those are my questions. So with all that being said, if you guys follow all that, we kept the date. We just added conducting a review and possible telephone interviews to be consistent with the other. It'll come before the meeting on July, June twenty-fourth, just FYI. And on the second page, it'll just be on preliminary phase, it will say city. On design phase, it'll say city. And the construction phase, it pulls the second line. And the rating criteria, I guess you'll just renumber it, that's all it is really, and spell criteria correctly. And it will be done by the Police and Fire Committee, to clarify. With all that being said...
Approve the RFQ for the Fire Station Architect.
With the request, with the amendments made?
Yep.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, all right.
All right, next thing on the list is the Police Station HVAC System. We only had one bidder. We sent it out to multiple local contractors, but only one turned it in.
Austin, who all did you send it to?
We sent it to Oats, we sent it to Lattes, we sent it to, well, we sent it to BMW. We sent it to Zach Sparks, and we, I...
Ohm?
I forget if we sent it to Ohm. I know, I handed one to Jason, too.
What about Hanover Electric?
I didn't, I think we only sent five out.
And Sloops and the other, you didn't send to?
I don't, I can't remember the list, but we sent out multiple and people we've worked with before that normally do bid, yes.
I think you should send one to Hanover Electric.
Out of Hanover?
Yes.
Okay.
I think we need more than one bid.
Well, I can't control whether...
Well, I understand that, but...
We tried to keep it...
And you might have better luck in another month or, I mean, right now is a time where everybody's swamped. I mean, you might have better results in another month or two when it dies down a little bit. I mean, right now, everybody's behind because everybody's air conditioners broke down. I mean, if we want to wait for a while, I'm just throwing that out there.
Just so, so you want him to, you want to table this for, we can table it for two months and, and just ask Austin to try to get at least two bids? Is that what you're saying?
Like, we can reject all and go out for bids again?
Was there a reason?
Otherwise, you can't leave one on the table and go out for bids again.
That's true.
Was there a reason that we did it right now? Just because it's broken or something, or they needed a new one?
It was planned for this year.
It was planned.
They're old.
But I meant like time for, was there a reason?
It's, it was by the time we got to, we've been working on all these other projects and it was just fitting it in.
All right, so does everybody, does someone want to make that motion to reject this bid?
I make a motion, we reject this bid.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we will go out to rebid and when you, when, since, tell us what time is a good month for him to do this?
Summer, they're busy, but right now especially, everybody's swamped. I think a couple of months, maybe you can go back out to bid again.
You want to do it in August?
Yeah, or August, going into fall.
Rebid September? Is that what you want?
Yeah.
So you want to rebid it in September? Bring it back to the council?
And Mayor, I think we should include all the local companies.
And send it out again? Okay. All right, so we'll do that. You can bring it back in September.
Okay.
All right, next thing.
Attached is sewer force main replacement. I wanted to give you guys the plans that CES put together. I think I said the timeline.
It says seventeenth.
The, actually, Tony said it would work better for him to bid on July sixteenth. So, and that the date to no longer be able to work would be November fifteenth on the bid.
Is that a KDOT restriction, or is that just we want it done before winter?
We want it done before winter. And Tony told me that a project like this, basically, they would open up, open it up and hopefully have the pipe in within a week. So...
So what do we do in the interim? Use our sewer truck going over?
No, they would bore it in right next to it and then, and then connect it.
Oh, okay, so we don't ever lose that ability to get it to lagoons?
Right. That is the idea.
So we just have to accept these plans or, you don't have a bid document, right?
No, Tony puts all that together. It's his contract that they, yeah, they, I think you already approved him to do the bidding, so it's, it's his standard contract saying working days, and I outlined the things he changed, the July seventeenth and the November fifteenth.
Oh, okay. Well, so we just have to approve this, these plans? That's what you want?
Yeah, just approve the plans.
Well, did you look at these, Jason, since this is your bailiwick?
This is beyond what I do.
Did anyone look at them closely? I couldn't read them. I'm sure Diane, you couldn't read them either.
No, no.
So...
So they're basically putting in, we did move it a little bit to get it into the grass more than the street, because right now it runs down the street. We want it to be able to access it a little bit better rather than having, having to dig up the street every, if, if it breaks. So that, that's the change. You can, there is a light drawing where it exists right now and then it...
Is that this little box? Is this what you're telling me?
Um, right.
Where are you looking at?
So right here. Here's the street.
Over here?
Yeah, that, that's the street. This is the new that goes in, there's the grass next to the highway. And then this is where it exists right now.
Oh, yeah, that's much better.
Yeah.
Did you guys understand that? Could you follow that? On this picture, this is the proposed, rather than right down the middle of the street? Is there anything else we need to understand?
That was the main, that was the main thing. And then the main goal of this is to have stronger pipe. So we are requiring stronger pipe.
So we had the least, the lowest possible...
Had the minimum that we required, yes.
And so we'll do, and this says somewhere that we're doing an upgrading of the pipe?
Yeah, he will, he has...
Is that? Where'd you go? Is that this one, existing fourteen inch? Well, that says new fourteen, existing fourteen.
Right.
But we're putting in something bigger?
Yeah, it's just a thicker wall.
A thicker wall? It's still fourteen inches?
Yeah, it'll still be fourteen inch.
That a mayor?
Yes.
We put in insection pipe, are we going to fuse it?
The, we talked about fusing it and it was not going to be cost effective to put it in. We are going to do section boring, I think. I'd have to go back to our, Tony's conversation back when we first started this, trying to get KDOT approval.
Fusing is actually much stronger than the section.
It is, because it melts it together. But there was, there was something about it. Hold on, there I gotta...
I mean, if there's not a whole great difference in price, I mean, we'd be better off ahead to fuse it together.
Fusing, fusing was much more expensive.
Much more.
Much more expensive. And I think with the fusing, it decreased the diameter, because the pipe they use, the, of the interior, to get that melted together, it was a really thick wall.
Okay.
So they, that was why we weren't going to go with fused. We, that was one of the things we, we were kind of pushing for with Tony, but...
Because I know it's fused on the underside of the bridge going across.
Yeah, yes, it is. Where'd you go? Why'd I think?
That was, that was the only reason, I was curious what the difference in price would be to fuse it versus putting it up in sections.
Right.
So it's already fused pipe that's going across the bridge?
On, on, hanging from the bridge right now.
In the sleeve that goes under the bridge, that's all fused going clear across.
Right. But here...
Because you don't want to be trying to replace joints over the river.
Right.
Over the, over the river?
Yeah.
Where'd you go? Section. Now I'm forgetting all the, because this, this has been months in, in the work trying to get KDOT approval, and I apologize for this, but...
Have we actually had breaks under the Broadway Street?
Yes.
We have?
Yes, we've had it under Broadway. Yeah, right there.
Is that where we had, you had gravel there for a long time and then you finally put concrete in?
We put concrete right there, yeah.
That was it? It broke there?
Yes.
Wasn't that during Boss National?
Yeah, right before Boss National.
Right before.
Right before, yeah.
So we still have it going under the highway, but just a short distance? We have to go under the road, I mean, under Broadway?
Yeah, just a short distance under Broadway. I can't find his specifications on here. But no, it's, it, we're going with the thicker pipe, yeah. Not, not the minimum for the, for the...
Pressure.
Pressure that we have right now.
I'll sell you one.
That's right, you're in the business. I tell you, I was looking at this and I was like, man, there's no way I can read this.
So I guess the, the main, the main purpose of this is it's, it's just replacing from the first air relief off the bridge to the bridge with better pipe. And it's connecting to the existing air relief and, and taking it into the, to the grass.
Helps.
And, and connecting it with the existing ninety degree that's on, on, on the bridge itself. And we did, I mean, we went round and round with KDOT on, on use of their right of way and connecting to the bridge. So now, I think this last Tuesday, I got approval from KDOT to, to move forward and, and work with this, even though it was already an existing structure.
So with that being said... So with that being said, and we're relying on CES to provide all the details since we can't read them.
Why is the reason for that please?
Why it's not bigger?
Why couldn't we have something big enough to read? Why didn't they send something bigger?
Was it just that this was the size that we printed?
That's the size it printed, yeah. Cause I mean, it came off, it was a PDF. They sent over to me. So I, I mean, everybody got an online digital copy.
You can zoom in quite a bit on the digital. It gets kind of fuzzy, but you can read it.
Can we request a legal size?
A D scale drawing?
We have to print them separate. If so, they messed up in the packets. We can't. And we've tried the ledger too. And we can do that, but they can't be included in the right pages in the packet then, cause it can't be on the attic.
This is a separate.
Yeah.
It messes with the.
It creates a lot of hassle.
But we, I mean, I'm not saying we can't do it.
I'm just throwing that out there for next.
So do you want to get a big one for us to look at and, and you know, this is kind of your bailiwick too, isn't it?
Not, not, not surveying and all that stuff.
Well, you guys happy with this or do you want to get bigger copies to look at that we would have to come in and look at city hall?
I can definitely print them out for you. I mean, what would be the main, what's the main question that is lingering on your minds as far as, that I can answer? Cause I mean, it, it, this, the basis is we're just putting a new pipe in the ground. And, and putting it in a more accessible place. No reel, we're not changing any motors right now or it's, it's a brand new pipe. So we don't have to replace or repair anymore.
They boring the streets?
We're gonna bore. We're preferential boring, yes.
Bore under the street?
Yeah.
Okay, it's you guys' call. Do you want to look at bigger copies or you want to just go with this? Then I would entertain a motion to accept these plans.
Move to accept the plans from CES on the forced main sewer replacement from Third and Walnut to the underside of the bridge.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh, alright.
Next one is a small, I just re brought up the small cell ordinance, no changes as of right now. I was doing a lot of research on, on just regular cellphone towers and talking to other communities. As far as what they've been able to do with regulating cellphone towers. I have anecdotal responses from at least one of them that says all their zoning has kind of gone out the window when dealing with cellphone. Specifically the setback requirements. They used to require 200 feet setbacks. But, but when dealing with cellphone providers or cellphone tower builders, that, that doesn't fly. At least according to this, to Edwardsville, who's city administrator, I've been talking with back and forth for the last week or so. They, it, the, one of the towers in question was on a private property. On the corner, highly visible. And they couldn't zone it out of existence is basically what he said. I've got a lot of questions after reading, trying to read through the statute that has to do with telecommunications that I have included into the packet. I don't know if it's all encompassing. Like I said, I think there needs to be more research on, on this. Some legal help. But I included that so you guys can see what we're going through. And I highlighted a couple of things that, that caught my eye in the statute specifically having to do with setbacks and interpretation of, of setbacks. Once mine pops up. Number 17. It's under, basically. This section where it says authorities, which is the city, authorities. Where's the last person? Basically you can't do any of this.
Oh, these, all these things that are on here you can't do? Or these are actual.
I'm looking for the last sentence.
Number F say shall not.
Shall not.
And authorities shall not under F, like two inches from the top there, number F?
Yeah, and authorities shall not, and then number 17, impose a greater setback or fall zone requirement for a wireless support structure than any other types of commercial structure of similar size. And how I read that, and this is my personal interpretation, is let's say. So a 60 foot wireless tower versus a 60 foot or a four story building. Our zoning ordinance says a 60 foot tower needs 200 foot of setback. Are you going to impose that same 200 foot of setback on that four story building? Commercial building.
Would the building be the same as a tower or would it be like a cell tower versus a radio tower or?
That's why it says than any other types of commercial structure.
But to me, there's a difference because if a tower falls, it's gonna fall.
Right.
If a building's on fire, it's gonna collapse down on itself.
Right, but again, this is just my interpretation. It doesn't say than any other types of, it says structure. You can't do it for a wireless support structure than any other types of commercial structure.
Similar size, similar size can mean height, similar size can mean breadth.
Yes.
I mean, you could fit a lot of towers inside an Austin area, which is four stories, right?
Right, right. So like I said, just a personal interpretation. I need, we need more research. I personally think we need more research on this. There's a lot of you shall not in here. And then, and the other thing I highlighted was in, shall not in conformance with 47 USC, 332C, 7BIV. Reject an application in whole or in part based on perceived or alleged environmental effects of radio frequency emissions or exposure. So you should have accepted science, I guess. And I'm not dogging anything or anybody, but the, it's just something that caught my eye. But like I said, I think there needs to be more research and confirmation. I'm, I'm getting stories from other communities saying that they have little to no control over what happens.
Madam Mayor, I've heard administrators' recommendations and that. Have you asked this gentleman or our attorney what he thought about this whole thing? Have you, so I have some, what do you think about this?
We've had preliminary discussions, I think mainly leading Austin, anybody else that may be reviewing this. To appropriate statutes of Kansas level. Austin's already aware of the federal law. And then the sample ordinance is specifically from Manhattan. So again, the preliminary, I have not rendered any legal conclusions. I haven't gotten that far necessarily been asked to. But from what Austin's saying, I wouldn't, I would generally not disagree. I would agree with Austin. This is, they're making it more restrictive. For cities to put restrictions on telecommunications. And what that means in other words is, cities really need to be careful if, if it would ever get challenged by some of these telecommunications companies. A city trying to restrict or prohibit the implementation. You could run into problems. And so if you're considering adopting ordinances to do that, to restrict, set standards, whatever the case may be, I think you have to be very, very careful how expansive you make them. And that's the gist of what I'm getting from Austin is it requires, I think, quite a bit of, again, it's just not something that should be done hastily. And as I understand now, there really are. We have some in the ULDC, very minimal, I mean.
So when I read the statute, it specifically said at the very top of 73, the small cell facility. It says an antenna is located in an enclosure no more than six cubic feet in volume. And then when I turned to this proposal on page 70, we say cannot exceed an 11 cubic feet. So I don't know why we, we don't at least reduce that down to what the statute says. And the same thing being the very next part where on B, when it says primary equipment enclosures can be no larger than 17 cubic feet in volume. When you go to R's ground mounted enclosures, which I assume is what this primary equipment enclosures is. We say their limitation is 30 by 30 by four feet high, which that's 25 cubic feet. So I, I would say we want to be, we would want to reduce those down as small as we can. I don't know why those are, why our ordinance would be bigger than what the statute says. And then it clarifies down here what we can charge on three quarters of the way down on number four. It specifically says charges shall not exceed and it says 500 for a colocation, colocation, application. And then 2,000 for a substantial modification. And I think we should go ahead and get that in effect. So that there is a charge from the get go. Statutorily, it says we can charge that, so seems like we would want to incorporate that right away.
It's off the top of my head, but the federal regulation touches upon fees. It's a, I think it's a reasonableness standard. I don't know if it's $500, but we certainly want to check. Always be checking that too, because it seems, the statute really. Well, I'd want to make sure, but if, if there are any conflict, I think you want to err on the side of the, if it's federal law saying you can't be too restrictive. I think the city would be behoove itself to all of that federal statute versus, or federal regulation versus a more lenient state statute. So I just, it's, it's a lot of cross referencing between laws here, which is why it gets so complicated.
But I'm, I just, I mean, I don't have the federal law, but I have the Kansas law here. And it seems like we would want to be as restrictive as we can for size. And we would want to start charging people as soon as possible, so it's not free to do it.
I agree.
And the other thing that I thought was on our ULDC, I talked to David about this and right now in all our zoning areas, we can have up to a 60 foot tower. Under the uses permitted upon review. Well, we could move that to a 30 foot at a pole or tower, 30 foot, communication towers and antennas and change it to 30 feet. We have that right. And then when we go back on page 128. When it goes back to, is it 126, 128? Wherever our little power thing is back here, I said 128, but I don't see 128. Oh, here it is, 127. Communication towers. The key thing is that that's under uses permitted upon review. So if we put it at 30 feet, then if somebody comes with a 50 foot tower, at least they have to do the whole neighborhood thing and communicate to all the neighborhood. Because right now it's 60 foot, if somebody comes in and wants a 50 foot tower, there's no restriction on that. So I think we want to change the ULDC to be more restricted. Maybe we can't control them doing it, but we can, we can communicate to the neighborhood. Yes. So I, when I talked to Dave about this today, we could change that restriction to 30 feet under uses permitted upon review. And then on the communication towers greater than 30 feet. We could keep the same clearance of 200 feet, which would also limit where they could place it. Because right now we have setbacks at 200 feet. So if we keep it, let's say a 30 foot or anything larger than 30 foot and still keep that 200 feet setback.
It would limit, just like a house tear down and put one up.
Yeah, so the key.
Again, I don't know if that's legal.
Well, I'm sure the use is permitted upon review. All we're do, we're not saying you can't do it.
It would just be, it has to come in and review it. So you have to let your neighbors know.
Right, that, that I can agree with, but the, the setback. I don't know if that's legal.
Well, if it is, we should do it. That's what I have to say. We want to keep that setback as large as possible. And if that's a setback we used to have, we have something to stand on there that we didn't change the setbacks. We didn't make them bigger. We just made.
Doesn't hurt to try.
Right. So that's what I propose. We change the ULDC from the 60 foot to the 30 foot under uses permitted upon review for all zones, all type of zoning. And on the communication towers, anything over 30 feet, we try to keep the 200 feet setback. You guys agree? And then I would, Austin, look at this and make, if the FCC is not more restrictive than this, then we want to make our ordinance as restrictive as possible on sizes. And we want to build in those charges as soon as possible.
I have one more thing on it.
Okay.
Is there anything regarding density regulations? Like, so not, if an alley is on a hill, they put one on every pole. Versus spreading them around. Just out of curiosity because.
I think it said somewhere in here.
I tried to.
That we can't, we can't question where they need to put it. I think that. I can't remember where that was.
I know one thing, Mayor, I was in Omaha two weeks ago and where my daughter's moving to up there. They have the 60 foot cell towers, the metal tower with, and there's, they're probably a, I want to say a foot by probably five foot. But it's just a constant circle around the outside of it. I mean, they are, you can see four or five of them real easily just driving down the, the street going to her house.
And that's why I think we need to be.
I mean, cause they're.
The ULDC, we need to make those restrictions as soon as possible.
They're not pretty to look at, I'm gonna say that.
I think to deny any of them, you need like a health or a safety or a, or, there was a line of three different things that I think you, you saw in there. That you can't just deny them because they're five foot apart. It's, or something like that. There has to be a reasonable.
And again, we're not going to really stop it, but we're going to make it more an awareness by, by lowering it. So I think we need to do that as soon as possible. And FC, and just check the FCC regs and if they're more restricted than Kansas statute, or if they're not more restricted than Kansas statute, I think we need to incorporate those changes. But I think we need to do it soon. You guys okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, somewhere it says, I can't, I should have underlined it. It just said you can't question their need to have it there.
Where are they? I was just wondering if maybe we could say like opposite ends of alleys or something? Not all along the same alley? I don't know, just.
So we'll go, you guys have any other changes for this ordinance as he's proposed it? I mean, we can, would we include those fees in this ordinance because it's a small cell?
The way they designed this ordinance was to go along with franchise agreements or a separate agreement with each. Cell company. That's how that's set up. And then they, what Manhattan is doing is a right of way permit. So they're moving towards that because they're getting away from franchise agreements, which will not be legal for wireless telecommunication starting July 1. So that, I mean, that's, that's how I understand it. There's. They're creating a separate ordinance for right-of-way permits. So it also covers a lot of different things other than, so if somebody wants to come in here right-of-way and do something where you don't already have an agreement, you also get a permit for that.
Well, I think we can go ahead and start charging, get the fee structure set up, and we can always add to it.
Are you saying the fees won't be viable as of January 1, like two weeks?
July 1. Franchise, franchise agreements won't be viable.
But this one's for cell communication. It says, we pay, we can charge.
Or the-
So that would be kind of made a moot point, but doing the permit-
I think it's colocation.
They would have to come in and file a permit in order to-
For every location.
I don't get it.
Okay.
But I think they can do up to 25 locations in a permit. I think that's what the statute says.
Well, we're going to charge them $500 per colocation.
It's almost like they have a giant lobby where they just have the supply of money to leverage our legislators into being hard on us. I know.
So.
And to undermine studies into the health effects of it and everything else, yeah.
Just as an example, Gina, and not, just because you brought up this, and I want to use it as an example of how the FCC's sort of general regulation, how it affects us, just a quick look at it, pulling it up, says the FCC considers a minimum spacing requirement that has the effect of materially inhibiting service as an effective prohibition of service. And so what you're suggesting is try to space them out, it may actually violate, it may not, it looks, it's, that's very vague, it would be a statement, which a lot of this is gray area, but-
Which usually are gray.
I just want to use that as sort of a, kind of a lesson to this, is why a lot of it has to really be like that. I think Manhattan probably, I know Manhattan, because I spoke with their legal department. I mean, they dedicated an attorney to look through this on her own, and it took, it took a long time, I think. But that's for Manhattan, you know, they're getting presumably different kinds of requests, more requests, I don't know.
Well, they're Marysville, then Marysville.
Right. And so the demand and the, and the supply, but I'm not, some of it may be applicable to what Marysville wants, but we just have to be cognizant of it, because we just, I foresee, you know, these big telecom companies getting pretty aggressive. This is big business, so.
I agree.
Even in Marysville, I mean.
It's why I just think we should start getting some of this, because they're obviously-
They're already approaching Marysville.
Yep.
As I understand it.
So we can change the ULDC quickly, so I think we need to do that. And then these other changes, I think we need to make quickly too. So, those are my comments. You guys have anything else you want Austin to research farther? And will you read, have you read through this whole thing, Craig? This whole ordinance? And yet-
The sample ordinance.
Yeah. Had you read through it?
Not with the fine tooth comb, no.
Okay. I'm just saying, we don't need to make, let them have bigger structures than like, than what they, we have to let them have, so.
I agree.
All right. Move on?
Airport taxiway, I was contacted by Gary Hallen about the taxiway at the airport that leads to the hangars. Gary told me that he was working with Don Landall on trying to get the taxiway fixed. They had the idea that if they got the money that was donated from the Cooksey Trust to the city for the project, Gary and Don would, could find volunteers and finance the rest of the project. He asked if it would be okay if they could have the 16K back, it's approximately a little over 16,000, back for this project, so they could do this. And I'd probably say, if you would do that, basically, when they get the project underway, sort of thing.
Are you making a motion there, Ken?
Yeah, I think we need to give it to them. It's like they're going to have time to do it, they can do it for us.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, the only, do you know if they're concrete or asphalt?
Concrete.
Concrete?
Yep.
And are they going to do the entire East Taxiway?
No.
Or they're just going to do those two really bad areas?
Yes. And they said it.
Have they shown you an area that they will specifically do?
No, they have not.
I think we, since it is city property, if we can just ask them to give us a map of what they are going to do.
The size of pads they're replacing and all that.
And yeah, and just keep us in the loop.
Specs on thickness and things, make sure it's all conforming.
Conforming, yeah. What did we pour out there on-
It won't be conform, it doesn't have to be conforming to FAA, right? You just want it to be sufficient.
Sufficient.
Okay. Because that was one of the things, is that when they threw the asphalt down before-
I think was what they poured out on the taxiway and the, where they park out out there, that they just poured, it's like six, eight inch?
Um, I thought it was four, but I don't know. That's a good question.
Just so we know the specs, right?
Yeah.
The areas they're going to do, what they're going to use, and say thank you.
Yeah, and say thank you, yes.
Usually we have a motion and a second, and just requesting this additional information. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, all right.
Next thing, just a reminder for the budget workshop, is Monday, June 17th at 5:30 PM at City Hall. Next thing is 11th Road, 12th Road, Keystone Meeting, sent out letters last week, have been getting phone calls ever since, asking questions about it. Today, I was given estimates on each road, on how much they, they could cost for the projects, so I can have, I will have those for the meeting.
That is concrete, correct?
Concrete, yes. And I did, we did, in conjunction with Craig, we did some research on assessment and what are possible limitations or how we could proceed with that, and found we could assess all those that benefit from the improvement, but precedent for all the other assessments for roads is to assess those that are adjacent to the project itself. We do have the ability to include the senior housing, Bulldog Apartments, Prairie Lane, and Hometown Drive. State statute states that we can distribute the assessments among the properties as long as they're deemed, as it is deemed fair, some of the, basically leaving it up to the council to decide how we're going to assess. And some of the options are, would be to assess by lot, linear foot along the road, and square foot of the lot itself, and that's not all the options, those are just some of them. If the city were to go, were going to go through with the assessments, we would have to hold a public hearing. So after this meeting, if it's decided that we're going to move forward assessing people, we would have, we would advertise for an actual public hearing for, specifically for those areas, to talk about it again, to run through the process.
Well, shouldn't we decide now, before you present to them, which of those options we want?
What do you mean, which of the options we want?
If we want to assess by lot, or linear foot, or square foot of the lot.
My understanding was this, was to see if they wanted to go through with the project.
Well, they're going to want to know what it's going to cost for that.
And I'll have some estimates, I'll use some of these as examples, and we would need to sit down and determine what was fair as far as assessing, because we have a different circumstance. If you go by linear foot along the roadway, well, senior housing and Bulldog Apartments have an advantage, because they have this, they have this frontage to the road, and then Prairie Lane doesn't have any.
And you get to Mrs. Richardson down there, she's got a long section through there.
And she's like that.
Why?
Well, see, if we don't tell, tell, give them what we will probably do, each and every share, each and every property owner is going to come back and say, well, I want this, I want this, I want this. Instead, I think we should present, we think this is the most logical way to assess it, rather than for them to figure out individually what's to their best advantage.
Of these three, I would probably recommend, because if you do it by a lot, by lot, that gives an advantage to the larger lots, where if you have just this little square on your, have a small property, you're getting charged the same amount as, say, Hometown Lumber, who has a five-acre lot adjacent to 12th Road. If, if you do a square, a square foot, that dulls out a certain amount, a dollar amount per square foot of your, your property. Of the three options, I'd say that would be, personally, I think, would be the most fair.
My problem with that is really, you're talking about vehicle traffic. You know, you're putting in a street, so whether your lot is 200 frontage or 100, you have one house, and you probably have one or two, maybe three cars. And it doesn't matter what your lot size is, you have that, about that many cars. So it seems like if you're going to allocate, and what's, what's the word? What's, what are we going to do, a tax benefit district, isn't that what we're going to do?
Tax benefit district.
So we're going to do tax benefit district for this, so all these people benefit from this, and is Bulldog Apartments like one property?
Yeah.
And, and Keating Drive is one property?
There's, there's, there's just one address on Keating Drive, yeah.
No, there's multiple, but there's multiple Bulldog Apartments too.
But there's one.
Oh, you mean-
But one owner.
The apartments, so Keating Apartments or whatever it is.
Keating, senior Keating Housing, yeah.
Senior Housing, yeah.
Because it would be by who owns the property.
It's, it's one boner, one owner.
So that would be one property?
Yeah.
And then Keating Drive would be one property, right?
Right.
And then would we, and then Hometown Lumber, Hometown Edition, each of those houses would be one property? But I think rather than lot size, I think it makes sense to do, usually I would say it's frontage road. And down, in, in, in Marysville, a normal street, I would say it would be, frontage makes sense, but not out there.
Where they have big lots.
Where they have big lots, and you, you know.
Each property would pay the same amount.
Well, that's what I'm just, I'm trying to get you guys to, I think it's better if we say, this is what we're proposing, rather than say, these are three options, and then they go home and calculate it, and each one of them calls and said, well, I want this, and I want this, and I want that. I think we need to go in with saying, this is the way we believe is the most logical way to assess.
So what do you think we would do with our apartments? Where they have like 50 cars, but one of them-
Well, the key thing about, but you have to, if Bulldog Apartment was on Keystone, I would have more of a problem with it. But Bulldog Apartments is right there, that only has a limited amount, 99 probably percent of them go to 11th Road North to 36. If they lived way down on Keystone, I'd have a really hard time with it. Same way with Keating Drive. I'd have a hard time if they were at the end of Keystone, but they're not. So, and Hometown Edition makes sense, because they have to access 12th Road, that's their only way out. So-
Can we, will we be able to get state funds for the, I guess, coming off the highway there, like we did at Kramer Oil, for that piece coming off the highway there?
Not unless we have some, the economic development move in there, you know? It has to be an economic driver.
Are you talking about 12th Road?
Yeah.
12th Road, yes.
When Orson was there, that was a possibility, was considering it.
I remember that.
But without economic development, I don't know of any KDOT monies.
I didn't know if just-
Unless, unless we had a bike lane, right? And if we had a bike lane, then we could get funding for the bike lane, but I don't-
I'm just curious if, you know, if Hometown was enough there to, for the state to, you know, adjust enough on that highway entrance coming in and off.
And Craig, on, on, on this, are we allowed to assess county properties in a tax district?
Not without some level of cooperation and communication with the county.
So if we, so if the entire property, and we have 51% of the owners agree to it, then to the assessment, as I understand, I've read this a long time ago, 51%, but then we can go ahead and assess everyone, but do we have that, a right to non-city people if we use a tax benefit district?
Not as it stands right now.
No, yeah, like, no, you cannot move forward that way right now.
So we create a tax benefit district, but we have to exclude each county-owned lot, because we cannot assess them? We as a city?
Potentially, which, I understand would complicate this.
So the estimate you got, was this, was it the entire U, 11th Road to Keystone down to 12th?
No.
How far did you go?
To 11th Terrace.
11th Terrace. And then did you do 12th Road all the way out to Keystone?
No, to the end of the pavement.
You just went to Keating?
Yeah.
His house?
Which is wrong.
It's, it is wrong, yes.
Because it needs to stop at Kiowa Road.
Kiowa?
Okay, that road too.
That one.
You're saying on either side of the street after Kiowa, that's where our city ends?
Because Gerald Wausenberger's not in the city limits of Marysville.
Right.
I know.
So we would just, we would do it-
Neither's Smiley, is he?
No.
So we would just do it on property owners in Marysville, and it'd be from Kiowa-
North.
North, 11th Terrace West, and the entire 11th Road, because we own, we're all 11.
Yes.
So how many properties are there? How many lots are there?
We were, I was trying to count today with, I think we kind of figured, we sent out, well, no, that includes Keystone.
Yeah.
Edition.
So now, do we propose to Keystone, I mean, I'm just throwing this out. Do we propose Keystone? If you want to do a benefits district individually, and take it from Kiowa to their entrances, if they want to, we should encourage that.
But there again, doesn't that fall back on the township or the county, because the one side of that's agricultural?
Well, both sides are a part of it, but, but it would be if Keystone wants it.
Who, who would maintain, the big question is who's going to maintain it once it gets turned into an asphalt or a concrete?
Well, once it's concrete, it's ours.
It'll be ours.
Because the maintain, the county's not going to maintain a concrete road.
And Keystone Edition would benefit.
Yeah, because-
They would benefit from-
So I think we need to say, this is an option for you to have your own individual taxing district from Kiowa to their south entrance, and see what they say. I mean, we give them the option, right? Just like we give the option of all the lot owners, the other lot owners, for this improvement.
So then they're taxed through the county for that?
The assessments?
Because they're-
Taxes, the taxes.
Yeah, who, how are they, if they make their own district, who taxes them, or where does that go?
It'd be through the property taxes.
We would tax them, because they're in city limits.
Okay, I didn't know how.
Keystone Edition.
Right, that's what I'm talking about.
If we were to take, basically, we would take over the road beforehand and do a project, and designate them as the benefactors of the project.
And then we, we'd still have that one section undone, but at least Keystone Edition, yeah, Keystone from 11th Terrace to 12th Road, but at least they'd have an entire street to exit should they choose.
And if it were nice concrete, they, that's what they would choose.
They wouldn't have potholes anymore.
Nope.
But, but you know, when you start talking about, you know, the assessments, you know, and, and I think one thing, you know, people often tell me, you know, I pay such and such in property taxes, and I always say, but only a third of that comes to the city. You know, so many times I think that whole property taxes come into the city of Marysville, so I say about a third of it's coming to us. But that, you know, a lot of them do pay high property taxes out there.
I know. I, I hear it.
So on those three options, what do you guys believe is the correct way to do it? So on those three options, what do you guys believe is the correct way to do it? If do it by lot, by linear foot, linear foot doesn't make sense out there. And square foot of the lot, it doesn't matter how far deep they're, I mean, I don't think that makes sense either, because they only have one exit, which is probably on the 11th Road Keystone or on to 12th Road.
Yeah, but there's some of those, like Kiowa, which is not a public roadway, that there's more than one house off of that, I mean.
Is Kiowa paved?
No.
Dropped.
It's, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I don't think it's, it's a private driveway. I mean, there's no city maintenance on that road.
It's not a city drive, Kiowa? It's not a city road?
It's like Prairie Lane. I mean, do we, I mean, do we play Prairie Lane?
Prairie Lane's our street.
But we don't, I don't think we do Kiowa, the same as.
You think at the north end of Kiowa is where the city ends?
Juniper, do we do Juniper? Off of 11th Road? I don't think we do that either. I believe it's a private street. Where Dr. Brown lives.
Go on that.
Back around.
It goes both ways.
Yeah, by Brunner's, I know that's not.
I don't think we maintain that either. Or the old 11th Terrace, or 11th Terrace North there by Brunner Implement? That's another one of those kind of, it's street, but it's not ours.
Oh, Brunner Implement.
Was that not 11th Terrace now? What's it called?
11th Avenue?
Drive.
11th Drive?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, I knew they renamed it.
I think we go by lot.
I think we propose, I think by number of lots is our most logical for there. Do you guys disagree? Yes.
I don't know, but when you're saying lots, would that include all the lots in Keystone?
Now Keystone would have their, if Keystone opted to go from Kiowa to their, their south entrance on Keystone Edition, they would have their own benefit district, taxing benefit district. And the other three, these other properties would participate in, in a different tax benefit district. That's how I perceive it.
Well, I just wanted, just like who developed Keystone, how many lots he got there?
Oh, he's got a lot. But, oh, that goes, hmm.
Yeah. Yes.
So you're saying the undeveloped lots?
Yes. You did it to Blumer. You made him pay it right up front.
That would be the fair way to do it.
Hmm, but he would probably have over 51% himself.
Would he have that many left?
He had 120 homes. I don't think they've built out 60, have they? How many do you think they've built out?
20?
No, more than 20.
A rotting house?
Yes.
I don't think there's much more than that.
But aren't most of them more than one?
A rotting house, oh, that's true.
Because they have bigger lots, they're not just.
They could be more than one lot.
I think there's.
There's only four on the.
Dawson Drive?
Yeah. The five, five.
On both sides of the street?
Yeah, there's only five going down here.
Yeah, that's right. There's five there and 20 on the other side.
Yeah.
Did you just count them?
Yeah. Google Earth.
So, so you can't tell how many of those are double lots?
Lots of lot. Somebody's got two lots, that's, don't have nothing to do with it.
Yeah.
But we.
There's probably 30 houses.
You can't, you can't necessarily, on some of these, they don't, they're not separated by lot. They're just one plot of land, like.
So you're saying, because we're not doing.
But if you do it by lot, you do it by all the lots.
True. So there, let's think about that. Theirs is different than the others. So you're just saying one house would be one lot, whether it's a double lot or not?
A lot's a lot. There might be one house on five lots. But if you're doing it by lots, that don't have nothing to do with it. If I want five lots for my house, I got to consider that.
So you're saying even if the house is on five lots, they would still be paying for.
By the lot, you're paying for five lots, no matter whether you got a hotel or what on it.
Well, those big houses, like, let's just, you said, you mentioned Delma Richardson?
Richardson.
That would be one lot? Or that could be many lots?
It could be three lots across there.
Yeah, but I bet she didn't buy hers.
Now you're just talking about, now you're just talking about square foot.
Now you're going back to frontage.
No, not frontage, square foot.
Yeah, but Delma didn't buy hers by lot.
I would bet, I would guess most of those are suburban residential, one lot.
She bought acreage. She bought an acreage.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would bet.
I don't know. So that's a huge lot that they have out there.
A lot of these, you can't, they're not separated on the map. Like the subdivision by the water tower, yeah, you can see all the lots on there.
Yeah.
But when you go to one of, some of these southern 11th Road ones, it's just, it shows the outline of their property and nothing else. And it's big property. So it's not, here's 15 lots right here. They're not platted, no.
Yeah, they're probably just.
Keystone's not pla, excuse me, Keystone's not platted?
Keystone is. We're just saying the other properties on Keystone Road.
Some of the other older properties that were.
Those big suburban residential lots.
By acreage a long time ago.
Rural residential lots, what are they, rural residential?
I don't know what there's on out there, I don't know.
Like Wassenberg's and Schmales and, and, and Richardsons, those were residential properties. So they were, wouldn't be by lots, I don't think.
I think at least we should propose it for the Keystone Edition. But to go back to your question, I'm not sure, they, those are platted lots.
Yes.
Yeah, I know.
So we would do that by lot.
We have to.
Where the other ones are probably just properties that were purchased acreage.
Hometown Drive would be?
Lots.
Lots.
Yeah. Yeah, Hometown Drive would be, Drive would be lots.
Just saying, we did it once on North Eight here, so.
By lots.
If you don't do it that way again, somebody's going to.
And we did assessments then by lot. We didn't do it by size. We did it by the number of lots, you're right. So at least we'd be consistent.
There you go.
And there's two houses up there that are taking two lots, each one of them are taking two lots.
Okay, so for the meeting on Thursday night, do you guys believe that we should do it by lot and offer that second option to Keystone Editions and just see what they say? The probably, if you have an estimate, whatever, you know, the linear, whatever it is, just estimate how it is from that Kiowa Road down there. You guys okay with that? At least have, start the discussions, right?
Proposal by lot, okay. For all of it, for 11th, for, just to throw it out there, that we're looking at by lot for all of it.
So, so like an 11th Road, would you divide the number of lots for 11th Road and do that separate and Keystone, that separate and 12th Road, that separate?
Well, that's, not a mayor, just like you talk about those apartments, those people are wearing out the road too.
I know, but they only, they hit concrete at the top of the hill, I mean.
If they're going to get concrete at 11th, when they come out though, they're, they're part of it.
Right, right. Well, we were going to charge them, but only one lot.
Why?
Only one lot?
They are kind of separated, but, I mean, technically, they're only one section, like you.
50 cars wearing out the street.
But, but again, we have concrete now to the top of the hill. So they're literally just going like a block on what we're finishing out.
I, I would still think it'd be fair to, to assess them.
Something.
Yes, yes.
But I, I, going back, what do you guys think? So 11th Road, would you do them, the taxing district, tax benefit district, all the people on 11th Road have whatever that cost is and all the people that are on Keystone Road, whatever that cost is? And 12th Road, whatever that cost is? Is that how you feel?
You can't, they, they can't differentiate the people that are closer or further away from, on the road, because.
So do you believe the Keystone people should be incorporated with the 11th Road people?
Because you're only going to have, you only have 12 houses sitting on 11th Road.
Okay, so you're, so you're saying the Keystone plus the 11th Road would be one taxing district? And the 12th Road people would be a separate taxing district? And Keystone Edition would be a separate taxing district?
Mayor, I would like to, like a, some, a planner who's dealt with these different issues, advise us, because we don't have any expertise in this.
We have a meeting Thursday night.
Well, we're just starting to talk.
I know, but we have to act like.
They need to know what we have planned for them.
But, you know, we were thinking, this is what we're thinking at this time. But what your guys are thinking is Keystone and 11th would go together?
To me, Keystone and 11th is natural, and Keystone and Hometown Edition.
And 12th.
And 12th is natural, because they're kind of one little ecosystem, one way, you know, what do I want to say? Like a waterway, you know, they're, they're one drainage ditch.
So, so you're saying 12th all the way to Keystone?
To me, that seems natural, because those people, that's their natural exit. Just the same way Keystone's natural exit is 11th. It's not the only exit for either one, but it's the primary one. So it's like its own tributary, its own watershed.
So you, so you wouldn't differentiate the break at Kiowa Road?
I really wouldn't.
You would make it one 12th, 12th Road?
I know, it's complicated.
I wouldn't either. I would.
12th Road?
Get the whole ball of wax included, yeah.
One thing I got to consider first, I mean, put, having, having those people pay by lot and everything. But it's an improvement to the city also, and we got to figure out how much we would contribute to this too. The city should, should, should contribute to this too. When those people get charged that, we're improving the whole city by doing it. So there's got to be some cost coming back on the city.
Mayor, in most cities that I have read about, 100% is, goes to the, to the benefit district, is assessed to the benefit district. There might be some, Carl mentioned entrances or something that the city would pick up the cost.
Well.
I think we'll just throw the amounts out there for the first starting meeting and see what the initial, you know, I understand what you're saying. And Darlene has cut out article after article that I've left for you guys to show that, she says 100% is always, I don't think that's likely here, but I think we start at that point and then we figure out what to do, right?
And Mayor, that, that's, that's all the infrastructure, that's sewer, that's water, that's fire, that's streets, sidewalks.
Okay. I just thought we had to have this discussion before Thursday night. You got fifth, kind of think where we were at? You follow that?
As long as.
12th Road is 12th Road.
Just want to.
Keystone and 11th would be together.
So you do, do those together.
If, how about, one last scenario? If Keystone, the majority of Keystone said, no, I don't want to be a part of this, then do we give the other people an option just to do up to Kiowa Road? Yeah, probably. Okay. Sorry, what?
And then by, by lot is what we're talking about, at least right now.
It seems the most reasonable to us at this time, right? And since it's most reasonable at this time?
Okay.
But on 12th Road, are you going to include, or, I'm sorry, 11th Road, are you going to include the Bulldog Apartments in them? Are you going to include them as each property as one lot? Are you going to include Bulldog Apartments as one lot and the others? Because that's going to make a lot of difference.
Well, yeah. Again, if I, if Bulldog Apartments was sitting out on Keystone, I would definitely say each unit.
But those people use that street a lot?
I understand, but again, it's a short distance that's not paved already. I, I know.
That usually doesn't, isn't taken into account.
They probably use it more than anybody else.
Okay, that's clear, isn't it?
Got more information for that, okay.
Moving right along.
Uh, okay, last, well, let me think, did I forget the last thing?
Yeah, the.
General fund is still above, excuse me, 800,000. Comparing this year to last year at this time, general fund is about 240,000 above last year due to large expenditures in the month of May. 2019 May expenditures for general fund are right in line with 2017 May expenditures. Just as a reference point. Water fund is still rising, but it's still 50,000 below 2018 May balance. Sewer fund is also increasing just at a slower rate than last year due to slightly higher expenditures. Sewer fund has seen almost 16,000 more in revenue compared to 2018 at this time. And to date, we've received about 11,000 less in revenue for sales tax, for specifically the sales tax fund, when you compare this time for 2018. Any questions about that?
Okay, I just have a, Seventh Street Improvement status, where are we at on that?
Um, the what?
The hump, where are we at on that?
They, they are designing it right now.
Okay, so they're designing?
Yes.
You made a comment that we have our new hires. So do, do we have new full-time, new part-time, new seasonal, what do we have?
New seasonal is all.
They're all seasonal?
Yeah, they're all seasonal. We've only been working with seasonal right now. Well, there has been some work on getting a, another police officer. I think I mentioned that at least once, but nothing has moved past.
The new hires are all seasonal?
Yeah, new hires are specifically seasonal.
And have we changed Butch's position from code enforcement from seasonal or part-time?
That was named seasonal, it was seasonal.
He's still going to be seasonal? Is there any reason why we don't make him part-time, because he kind of works year-round?
Because of the benefits that have to come if they're going to be.
Part-time, part-time has benefits?
Yeah.
It is written in our handbook.
Last year, he, he qualified as seasonal and this year, he, he has to take.
He has to take 13 weeks in a row.
13 week break, yeah.
Oh, and he did?
Yeah.
He will, this coming up.
He will again.
And so, and he has to stay under 1,000 hours for capers?
That's what capers.
Yep.
Okay.
Actually, season, yeah.
So after he takes his 13-week break, then we'll rehire him as seasonal, is that how it's going to work?
Basically.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kind of like we do the dump.
Okay, and last thing, in the information packet, I did not see the sales tax information. Do you not see?
I haven't gotten an email. I haven't received my email.
You didn't get that email? I did get the email. And I gave it to Kenny, but you always do the other.
I haven't, I haven't received the email. So I wondered about that the last time, but I haven't received the email.
And the other thing is the tax distribution, did we get the tax distribution, Cindy?
It's, it comes June like 3rd, or, I mean, they send a letter, it's coming, I don't.
June, June.
It's in June.
Sometime, mid-June.
But you say it's June 3rd, so you'll include that in the information packet when it comes?
When it comes.
Okay. That's all I have for Austin. You guys have anything?
I never thought to ask if he got the sales tax number.
All right, we'll go to Standing Committee, Street. I just need to make a comment. Dennis Mason called me, was concerned about the wiring under the bricks. And Dave is, is aware of it and he's going to make sure when Seventh Street is redone, to fix that. So.
At least a portion of it, yeah.
Yeah, and then he also talked, Dave also talked about putting conduit under the bricks rather than whatever they used before.
With that project, yes.
So, anyway, Dennis Mason, who spent many hours, wants to make sure we do it right. So, and Dave is well aware of it. All right, anybody else have Street?
Couple things. One is, what's the status of getting some of the trees that didn't make it downtown replaced? Because I'm pretty sure they're not going to.
Right, right. And he's fully aware of it. He's already trimmed up and actually prepared, not the ones that are dead.
Some of them are kind of suffering and then some are just outright.
Right, right. He trimmed up the ones we could, we think we can save. And he's already been in talks with the distributor about them, yes.
The ones that are doing well look good.
Yeah. So how many do we have that died?
Four?
Four, and one that's partly dead.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's, yes.
And so, too much water? Why would it?
No, it just, he thinks some of them had too small of a root ball on them. And he taught, he said he'd talked with the distributor when he first got them about that, so they knew about it.
So they should take care of it.
Yeah, should take care of it. So, no.
Warranty on trees?
Yes, I, I, I've been wanting to ask him to remove those, but I did have a conversation with him already.
Good.
Yep.
The other thing was, up where. The other thing was, up where on North Street, where Landall's shop or PDC goes across to Shop 4, there's quite a bit of traffic back and forth across there. The road is pretty torn up, the aprons are extremely torn up.
I agree with where we're at. North Street between 18th and 20th.
Between Lines Park and Landall's main office. There's that kind of gully there where all the semis come in and out of Landall's PDC building. It's been a problem for a while.
It's getting really bad.
Since I don't work there, I don't feel like I'm being biased by saying it now. But, yeah, it's pretty torn up.
It'd be close to 19th Street and North Street, some between 18th and 20th.
And I feel like the forklift traffic and things going back and forth across there probably also shakes it up and beats it up quite a bit. And then, I don't know what the solution is other than maybe concreting that strip at some point. I hate to spend the money, but might be something where Landall's would be happy too to partake in redoing the aprons and all that. I don't know. It's just pretty darn rough.
If you watch them come down the hill, they don't get their forks raised in time.
Gouge it.
Yeah, they eat it, it's eaten away like six feet or so.
It's pretty amazingly bad, so.
Is that it?
That's it.
Mayor?
Yes.
I noticed during the activities last weekend that quite a few light bulbs are out in the street lights, the decorative ones.
That was for ambiance, I'm just kidding. It's hard to check those all the time, but... Anything else? Anybody else, Street? Okay, water, wastewater. Did you ever test that water at Ethan Jenkins? It's not running right now. It must have just been spring? It really is a spring?
We've, a lot of this, we've felt that it's how they'll put it, hydrostatic pressure pushing well water up, so, yeah.
But did you ever test it to see if it had?
I don't think we ever got to test that, but if it stopped, it's kind of...
Did you get the water running at that Laramie address?
Yeah, they put a Band-Aid on it so far, and they're almost ready to hook up the new main.
Main, okay. So they have water?
Yes, they have water, yep.
Anybody else have water, wastewater? Parks and Rec, I just drove over there. The levee needs to be mowed, or if they've been waiting because it's been muddy. I mean, have you walked around there?
Out to the levee?
What, out to like Ferry Park? It's really high, the grass? You guys been out there?
Haven't been out there lately.
Yeah, but I think they're trying to do it so they don't cut into the levee when they mow.
Because of the wet?
Yeah, so we don't cut it, cut it up.
Okay, well, they need to mow it as soon as they can. The swim meet, I saw they had a great turnout. I'm really glad people are using the pool. My family came and said, "We have an amazing pool." Took my grandkids, and I saw the water and sewer people are working at the pool. Are they certified pool operators as current?
I agree with you on the swim meet, and I think moving the entrance for people going to spectate over to the drive-through entrance there on the northeast corner was a very good move, rather than walking down the muddy slope. I previous years, it confused people. I saw a lot of people try to walk the other way. But I definitely think that flowed better, was a good idea.
The driveway that we put down?
Yes.
I do think, like I said last year though, that if we could find a way to have some even temporary speakers or spin the speakers on those north poles, because you can't hear the announcers for anything in the stands. People like the trees and the shade, and down, when you're down by the pool, you can hear, I mean, that's the point 90% of the time.
They didn't put a speaker up on the top of the slide?
Yeah. It's just, it's really hard to hear when you're out there, especially when you're spectating, trying to hear which events coming up and, you know, announcing swimmers to go out, so...
Can you put something out there?
I don't know if there's any kind of way to... I said last year would be cool if they could have, put a pivot mount on those speakers and just spin them out to face north during the swim meet. But, I mean, you don't want the whole neighborhood hearing most of the time, but on that given day, it would be spectacular to do it. There's probably some sort of easy technical fix to that.
Wireless speakers now that couldn't you put on the fence or something?
Oh, yeah, I don't know.
For temporary basis?
I just, we've got another year now to think about it.
We don't have another swim meet? We only have one a year?
Only one, unless we have a...
We got one on Wednesday night, G26.
Okay, I was gonna say.
It's on a Thursday night or something.
I don't know if we can get the speakers fixed by then.
I don't have it on my calendar. But at any rate, it'd be a nice little thing to improve it again, just a small thing.
I don't know. There's one on a weeknight, I know that.
Anybody else have Parks and Rec? Yes?
Yeah. Could Kathy come and give us a report on how the swimming pool's doing at the next council meeting, maybe?
Ask Kathy to come.
She did tell me there was 133 people that came to the free swim the other day.
Swim meet.
Just so you know, not to the swim meet, to the free...
I mean, to the free swim, yeah, to the free swim.
On Wednesday night.
Well, I was there on Friday and it was packed.
Yeah.
Okay, Cemetery and Airport, I just want to say, I saw a couple days, there was 90-plus users out at the dump, so that's a very busy place. You guys have anything Cemetery and Airport?
Not a mayor.
Yes.
I'm kind of curious, after going through the bills, who's on Cemetery and Parks that's getting punished because we buy a push mower for up there?
For water sewer.
Oh, water sewer.
Water sewer.
They're being punished.
Yeah.
No, they only have, they have spots where they can only push mower.
A reel mower?
Yeah.
I'm sure it's self-propelled, Terry.
Well, I don't know, it said a push mower.
Out at the Royal Houses around the fences, yes, there's specific...
You think somebody's being punished for that, Terry?
I thought they were.
And inside the dog, or that water, inside that fence, they have to push.
Can't believe it.
You didn't know people did that anymore?
Just up to the water department, maybe.
I've seen people asking about dump hours. What are our current dump hours?
Currently, Wednesday, 4:00 to 6:00, Saturday and Sunday, 1:00 to 5:00. I was looking in to try to open up full-time, starting next Monday, seeing if Deb was available to...
17?
So that'd be 4:00 to 6:00, Monday through Friday?
What do we normally do, 4:00 to 6:00?
People said everything's growing so fast and bushy, it's hard to stay on top of it.
Somebody asked, why it wasn't open last Friday?
I know, we had to rush out there on Wednesday night.
They changed the hours, didn't they? Tell them why.
Okay, police and fire, admin and finance? I don't have my appointments done, so I apologize. City attorney, your turn.
I guess I will, I have a few questions, I suppose. I mean, I reviewed what was, materials that were forwarded to me, including portions of an ordinance. I don't, I guess I don't want to get off on some sort of irrelevant tangent, as lawyers can do, so...
How self-aware.
I think that when you said nuisance violation enforcement, you know, when I read Chapter 8, 201, 202, 203, 204, 205, it said, "The governing body charges the city inspector with the administrative enforcement." And then it says, "The public officer shall make inquiry if..." In writing, you have two or more people complaining?
Right.
It does, so it's strictly complaint-driven?
According to 8203, falling under this health nuisance article, it says receiving a complaint in writing by two or more persons, or is informed by the Board of Health, Chief of Police, or the Fire Chief. So that would be a little different than a, say, a citizen complaint, as I read it.
I guess the next sentence, it says, "A public officer may make such inquiry and inspection when he or she observes conditions which appear to..." So the public officer can observe it as well as a written complaint?
That's how I read that portion, yes.
Okay. And then, I guess, 8205, it says, "The governing body shall serve..."
Right. And it's my understanding there's maybe some disagreement or whatever there's discussion about, so how does that encompass this council on any one of, any nuisance that would fall under this that has been observed and a potential notice of violation would go out?
Right.
And so, looking at the definition of first governing body pursuant to this code of ordinances, is this council and the mayor. So as I read it, the interpretation that this governing body shall serve the owner with an order stating the violation, so it needs to come from this body, that's unusual from my experience to be done that way. I don't know that a lot of councils or commissions would want it done that way. I could see arguments both sides, and I don't think, I'm unaware of a law that prohibits you from doing it one way or the other. An argument for not conducting it this way to where the council has to make the order every time is, the council may not want to do that. It may not want to micromanage the public officer who has other authorities pursuant to this, that it could be done by way of the officer at City Hall sending that notice out, and then it could trigger a hearing before this council if requested by the person or persons alleged to have violated this nuisance, and that's later on in this ordinance is, they have 10 days to request a hearing. And it could be in front, as I read the ordinance, it could be in front of the council or somebody, a representative designated by the governing body. So the hearing doesn't even, under this health nuisance section, doesn't even have to come before the council. But to go back to that question under 205, it seems clear in my reading, that says, "The governing body," which is clearly defined as this council mayor, "shall serve upon the owner, agent of the property found by the public officer to be in violation of Section 201." So to back up from there, the ordinance says that the public officer, if making inquiry and inspection, observes conditions, they then shall, I believe it states, issue a written report, shall make a written report of findings. So, well, presumably, and this is where it becomes very unclear to me, it would be to the governing body if that is who is tasked with making the order of a violation. Again, that, I don't see that. Was that the intent of this, you know, how this ordinance was written back whenever it was written? I don't know, of course, but, and I don't know if that's what this governing body wants to do.
Well, I do want to point out that on the weeds section though, he has total authority on the weeds. At 8401, 402, 403, it says, "The public officer shall give written notice to the owner," and that's, we don't have to do, we are not involved with it there.
Right.
So, that way, that part, we're doing okay, but on the health nuisance, and I guess the benefit of doing it the way the book says is that we're aware of the properties that he wants to send that letter to. Because now, we really don't know, I mean, he gives us a list every once in a while, but we don't know on an ongoing basis. If your neighbor calls and said, "Hey, oh, actually, that happened to me. Somebody was really upset that they got a letter," and of course, I didn't know how to address it because I don't know what the property looks like, I have no idea what the problem was, and, you know, and does a letter say it's coming from the governing body?
No. In that example, I don't know that it's appropriate for any member of the governing body, the council or the mayor, to make a inspection or inquiry based upon a complaint because, as 202 says, it's this public officer, whoever that is, in this case, it's a city inspector, is charged with the administration and enforcement of this article. And I see that maybe, I don't know that's contrary to 205, because reading it maybe in the most limited way, the governing body's only responsibility is to issue the order stating the violation to be served on the owner or agent, and then maybe later down the road, have a hearing if it's requested. Again, I, generally speaking, I think that this particular 8- Article 2 should probably be revisited and maybe cleaned up. It's confusing to me, so I'm sure it's confusing to anybody who has been alleged to have violated it.
Yeah.
Well, not confusing, confusing, I should say, the process of finding violations, how notice of those violations are given, sort of.
But again, so we don't know what letters go out. Like, we don't know of any letter that's gone out this year, so we don't know what's gone out, and then people say, "Well, I got your letter." We have no idea what it is. Not that I'm gonna advise them, but, you know, it's always good to be no knowledge other than be blindsided by not knowing they got a letter, you know. You know, the weeds, I can say, "Hey, was it weeds? Was your grass over eight inches tall?" That's kind of a no-brainer, but the rest of these, you know, I would at least be...
I think that the notice, whatever section it falls under, should tell the, should, at the very least, should tell them what violations are being alleged and what options the person has.
Yeah, what specifically?
Have a hearing, request a hearing, do nothing. What happens if nothing? You do nothing. And I think, from a review of some notices, it says that generally, but I think it's worth revisiting the notices, because to me, in my review, different sections, different violations of the code trigger different actions. Like the difference you just pointed out, under Article 2 or under Article 4. There are different ways to proceed for the city inspector, for the public officer.
And, you know, I didn't look up about blighted properties. Does it, I don't know how that comes into play, because Dave?
Under quick, adjunct motor vehicles, it's the same language as Article 2, "The governing body shall serve upon the owner."
Mayor, is Butch off at this time?
I'm sorry, what?
You were mentioning 13 weeks.
That was in the winter. He was off.
Oh, okay, you were talking about last year, okay.
Trying to find blighted properties.
I don't know where they are. I know there's a section on trash.
It's not unusual in my experience for a public officer to be, in some cases, solely responsible for the inquiry and inspection of a property, the determination that a violation has occurred, creating a notice of that violation to be sent to the owner, and then from that point, how it proceeds triggers a couple of options, as these ordinances do. But as I read it, that's not exactly what Article 2...
Says.
Sets forth and allows, regardless of how the city's been operating in the past, that at least is a relation to Article 2. I think it's maybe a question for the council to consider. How does it want, I mean, does it want to review everyone prior to a notice going out? Or does it want to review it if that person requests a hearing, stay out of it, and let members of the city administration handle it? And if it's the latter, I think we're gonna need to revise the language in some of the ordinance.
Well, Mayor, I don't think we want to get involved until, unless there's a hearing requested.
Yeah, because, I mean, our meeting, like you said, our meetings are long enough. We don't need to have everybody come in here for a weed notice or something, you know, to...
Yeah, the weed notices, we're doing right, though.
Right. And on the other side of that, the operational standpoint of, let's say, we start doing exactly as the book says and bring all notices to council. So you guys go through it today and do all the approvals, send out the notices tomorrow. Tomorrow, we find a nuisance, a new nuisance. We wait two more weeks to bring you a new nuisance. So it adds two weeks to the whole process. That's just an operational standpoint right there.
You're right, the junk vehicles, go, say, the governing body... You're right, the junk vehicles, go, say, "The governing body shall serve." I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
No, no, you didn't.
I'm just still reading.
I think it's a health nuisance.
I can't find blight.
That might be health nuisance.
But anyway. Unfit buildings?
Demolition, yeah, unfit buildings.
Designation, there I found it. Inspection. It says there, "The public officer will arrange for informal discussions with the violator." It doesn't say this governing body there. Then it says, "The governing body is hereby..." It's 8614. Informally review the violation, take action, hear appeals. So, the main thing is, we are not following the codebook, and we need to decide what role we want Butch to play, or not Butch, I'm sorry, the code enforcer to play, and when the governing body looks at it for the first time.
I'd say we just amend it and change it so the code enforcement officer sends out all the notices. I don't really wanna hear about it unless they dispute it, I think, come in front of the council. I don't think we wanna get bogged down with every code violation, really.
I agree.
So, is it consent of the council to modify the code to give him the same authority he has on weeds for health nuisances as well as vehicles and blight and everything? And so, the only time it comes before the governing body is when it's at a hearing? Is that, there's a yes, yes, yes?
No, I didn't say no, yes. I'm remaining neutral in this.
Oh, you guys?
Yes.
So, at this point in time, we're just gonna bring a, we do need to modify the codebook?
An ordinance.
Okay. That's what we're gonna bring to the council to modify it?
Who's designated it when Butch is gone?
It's the city, well.
Who's designated the city inspector when Butch is gone on his vacation?
I always understood it was whoever was in charge of everything. I mean, and then they appointed, like, the code enforcer.
It says, "The mayor shall designate a public officer to be charged with administration and enforcement." And then it says, "The public officer or authorized assistant."
Yeah.
Shall give the written.
It's Dave or authorized assistant.
Dave or Butch.
Yeah.
Dave would be the public officer, and he would be the assistant.
Yeah.
Okay, so, consensus of council, not unanimous consent, but consensus of council is to.
Come up with an order?
Yeah, modify the codebook. Anything else, Craig, about this?
No, not unless there are other questions.
Okay. The only other question I have is on our bond and interest fund. I don't know if I posed this to you before, but our bond and interest fund, not the bond and interest fund number one, or 1A, as a water sewer, but our bond and interest fund one has $223,000 in it, and we don't have any general obligation debt. Can we, and I read the statute, and I, I think it says we can pull that money out, and we have $223,000 in there.
It would be based on how the ordinance is written when they establish the fund.
I think the ordinance does say that.
So, we don't have any debt, and we have $223,000 in there. So, I was wondering if we could pull that out. Will you look that up for me? All right, you guys have anything else for Craig, since he's here, before he goes out of town again?
We'll be going out there.
He didn't spend all his money in Atlanta.
Okay, with that being said, I don't have anything for Roundtable. Darlene?
No. Oh, yes. Thursday, at 7:30, will be the band concert in, on the lawn, the Kester House Museum.
So, that night, we have the 11th, 12th, and Keystone Road meeting. R S B P has their volunteer dinner, and there's a concert at the Kester. So, some of you, we're gonna be three places at the same time. Anything else?
No.
Gina?
No.
Terry?
No.
Todd?
No.
Diane?
No.
Kevin?
Just running into a few people that said the car show in Marysville was just a great place to be, the whole week, you know, starting on Thursday night, clear through till Saturday, they said.
A great place to be.
Great place to be, they said it was awesome, so.
Hallelujah. Jason? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, moved?
Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? Oh, shit, you didn't buy two.
Go to work really tomorrow.
Hey, it's probably the last one.
The labor, plus all my stuff I kept brought up during standing committee reports.
But I actually said that at the beginning to try to.
I was gonna do the trees.
So, were you?
I know, you say, you can control them.